The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
Sandy, please take roll call.
Becker?
Here.
Maloney?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Sitnikow?
Absent.
Shelton?
Also, I assume they're coming later. Oh, they are? Okay.
Vandenhove?
Here.
Warren?
Here. All right, Christina's here. And I'll entertain a motion to convene in closed session.
I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 print one print C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation data of any public employee over which governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, in pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 print one print F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where par print B applies, which, if discussed in public, would likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations to wit staff investigations. The board will reconvene in open session at 6:00 PM pursuant to a section 19.85 print two Wisconsin statute to consider the balance of the agenda, which will include an open forum, system and monitoring reports, and superintendent's update.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sandy?
Aye. Warren?
Aye.
Vandenhove?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Carried 7-0 will convene across the hall. Right, I'd entertain a motion to resume into open session.
I move that the board reconvene in...
Open session pursuant to section 19.85 print two Wisconsin statutes to consider the balance of the agenda.
Second.
Sandy?
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Warren?
Hi.
Vandenhove?
Aye.
Carried 7-0. Before we move to our pledge of allegiance, I'd just like to note that we're joined at the table by our two intercity student council members, Luke Pizzani from Southwest, who's the president of intercity student council, Noah Becker from West High School, who's the clerk of the intercity student councils, all right? Secretary, all right. And then also, to my left, Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent, and to my far-left, Sandy Heller, our board secretary. Also, would like to let members of the public know, you can view the board agenda and handouts, as well as minutes from past meetings, by visiting the district website at www.gbaps.org. Click on "Our District," which is at the top, and then "Board of Education" on the left, and a menu will come up on the left, and you can find a link to agendas and minutes. This link will take you to a website called Agenda Manager, where all board agendas, minutes, and handouts from board meetings are housed. At this point, we'll go... Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next, this is something new to our agenda. The board worked this summer and into the fall to create our collaborative commitments, and we have decided that we are going to read those at the beginning of each of our board meetings. And so at this point, we'll have there seven of them, and so I'll have each of the board members read one. I'll start with Rhonda on the far right. We'll go around the circle and just read one each.
We will strive to review board materials and seek clarifying information before board meetings.
We will embrace diverse views and perspectives as a path to effective solutions.
We will show consideration to everyone, fellow school board members, staff, students, families, and community members in our speech and behavior.
We will consider the merits of ideas as the primary driver of our decisions.
We will offer our comments efficiently and succinctly, and avoid repetition in order to keep board meetings to a reasonable length.
We will create equitable and inclusive opportunities to promote community engagement.
We will engage in conversations in a way that allows all perspectives to be shared, considered, and valued.
All right, thank you. And next is our open forum. And before we begin with that, I'd just like to let the public know that we'll provide our community with two different opportunities during tonight's meeting to speak before the board. The first opportunity is during our open forum. The second opportunity is during agenda items where indicated by public comment on our agenda. All speakers must fill out a form indicating their desire to speak. If you wish to speak during tonight's open forum, you may do so with respect to either items that are posted on tonight's agenda, or any other matter you wish to share with the board. Please know that Wisconsin's open meetings law prohibits the board from conducting business on matters brought before this... or brought during this open forum. The board also will permit public comment during agenda items, as noted on the board's agenda. During this public participation time, consistent with state and federal laws, board members may engage in dialogue with the speakers. In order that all voices are heard, the board will suspend engagement until all speakers have had a chance to speak. The process for speaking during the agenda items is as follows. The board will first hear the presentation and discuss the agenda item before calling on those who desire to speak. If you'd like to speak during a specific agenda item, please fill out a form and give it to the board secretary at any point during the meeting. If you desire to speak and haven't yet filled out a form, just indicate that to the board secretary, and you can fill out a form afterwards. The board secretary will provide the names of those wishing to speak to the board member conducting that part of the meeting, and you will be called upon to speak at the appropriate time. Please keep your comments to five minutes. Prior to starting your comments, please provide your name and address. So at this point, I have a number of people who would like to speak before the board, and I'm going to call them up in the order they were received. First is Brian Setzer.
Brian Setzer, 1554 Van Road in Green Bay. I'm going to be speaking again on behalf of Jefferson Elementary School, and in regards to the redesign 2020. First, I'd like to comment on the data. This is something that's ingrained and embedded in the education world. Yet when making this decision, as critical as closing a school to possibly repurpose it for another use, there's been a surprisingly lack of it. There's been no data presented to date showing that the move to consolidate Jefferson with Fort Howard is the best move for the students at either school. If I, as an educator, were to go into a meeting recommending a student needs specific services, or to be referred for special education, we could talk for hours about what that student is like, and why I'm justifying that move. But at the end of the day, what it's going to come down to, and I'm going to be asked for, is one thing, and that's data. If I don't have that, nothing will move forward, and the meeting will end immediately. So why are we not demanding the same thing in this situation? We received some numbers, you know, in a packet. To me, this isn't really data, as much as this just shows enrollment numbers, which I guess in itself is data, but it's not data showing why this move would be better than any other specific move. We keep hearing the district does not have all the answers. I'm not sure how we could make an informed decision on something like this in this process with so many unanswered questions. With something as important as this, shouldn't there be solid data to back what is being stated? We've been told there are multiple proposals and other things being considered. To date, I have not heard any other legitimate proposals. In order to consider them, we should have been presented with them in such a way so that we could compare them. For example, proposal A would be consolidating Jefferson with Fort Howard with the costs, the benefits, and the drawbacks listed. That would be followed by proposal B and proposal C, showing the same data, and that would allow us to compare all the proposals and see which one would fit or would be best. At this time, we have no idea if this is the best option with consolidation, because no other option has been formally laid out to us. In terms of the supports and services that the students will receive, it's been touted that this is a major benefit of this consolidation. There's been nothing presented to date showing that if the schools are consolidated, the students will receive more supports and services. We've been told there's a formula that is needed to be used, and that may or may not be used going forward, but at this time, we have no idea what the formula will state is the correct amount of services, or what that will look like. It's entirely impossible the students from Jefferson and Fort Howard could actually end up having access to less resources. But at this time, we have no idea. Saying this is a benefit but not providing any data showing that the students will have access to more resources is nothing but talk. Also, many of the services that are said to be going to Fort Howard, according to this packet here, are listed only as one-year transitional services. But what happens after one year? The students will need supports long-term, not just for one year going forward. This, to me, all leads to a big problem with the whole process, and that's an overall lack of transparency. I'm not in any way saying it's been intentional, but it has existed in this process. It first started with the letter sent home to families, and this is the letter that I passed out to you guys a few minutes ago. Nowhere on that letter does it state that the proposal is to consolidate Jefferson with Fort Howard. The letter gives the impression that the meeting is more of a general informational session, and that nothing is being presented in any formal way. And when in reality, that was not true. It should have stated on the letter what the proposal was. It was not until after the fact that many families actually found out that something was officially proposed for the following year. And much of it has been families catching up via word of mouth and asking questions. I'll also note the letter was signed by our principal, but it was not written by our principal, so I'll add that in there. I feel like I don't know the answers to many questions, and I'm as close to the situation as anybody. Again, stating that there are not answers to many of the questions, and a lack of any concrete data, has led to an overall feeling of a lack of transparency throughout the whole situation. It appears that consolidating Jefferson with Fort Howard is the easiest move, but is it really the best move? Right now, we have no idea, as other options have not been presented. Like anything in life, the easiest thing is not always the best thing. And in a situation as significant as this, simply taking the easiest route is not acceptable. Lastly, I'd like to commend the students, families, and staff in the Jefferson community. While this is hung over our heads for the last month, everyone has joined together and continued to put the students' best interests first. With that said, it's still extremely stressful for all involved, and in some cases, life decisions are hanging in the balance. An example is last meeting, we heard from a parent who bought her house in the Jefferson area because she wanted her child to attend Jefferson. Staff are also expectedly uneasy with so many unknowns surrounding next year. With no concrete data or other options presented to date, I'm asking you, as the board, to put this matter to rest tonight and end this proposal. It's unfair for the Jefferson community to have to endure this for any longer. It's also unfair for the Jefferson community to have to put life decisions on hold while we wait for information that just isn't there. It's time that the Jefferson community starts to look forward, and as you know, that even though the school year is young, plans are already taking place for what would normally be happening the following year. But that can't happen for us. I'm asking that this matter be put to rest and ended, so that we can continue to look forward and develop a plan for continued success at Jefferson going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Oh, Rhonda?
Thank you so much for coming forward and advocating for families and staff at Jefferson. I appreciate that very much. I have a question I just would like you to clarify. You had mentioned something about there's a one-year transitional... one-year transitional services. I haven't heard that personally. That was not something that I was told as a board member. Where did you hear that?
We were given a handout with some information on it earlier today, and on it, it had some listings. I don't think it's anything set in stone yet. I think it's just some possible recommendations for what would happen. And on there, there's some things about transitional things, you know, these might be transitioned for one year, sort of a transitional period, extra services and things of that nature.
It's the word transitional that trips my mind, right? When I heard you say that. Because transitional doesn't mean permanent. It doesn't mean commitment.
Okay, this is... It's not a question anymore.
I'm just trying to relay...
Yeah, I know, but I can say it. I'm going to say it later, then. That's fine.
Great. Another thing I'd like you to clarify, if you could. There was a formula you mentioned. Can you talk about that?
We've been told that in terms of resources, and you know, whether it's, you know, extra services for the school, that there's a formula that's used. Now, I know that's not set in stone as well, and that can be altered, depending on the situation. You know, and that formula is, you know, determining the amount of services that will be allotted for that school. We've heard many things in terms of, you know, we'll be using that. We've heard as far as, you know, no, we won't be necessarily using that. We'd be able to go around that and provide more services. And then we've heard also, well, it might just be for a year. It could be a transitional services, so you might get those extra services for the first year, but then after that, you know, there was nothing set after that. It'd kind of be a one-year thing for extra services. So again, we've heard multiple things on that front with nothing, you know, I guess with nothing solidly set, and I guess that's the issue, is that there's so many things up in the air still, we just have no idea what the resources are going to look like.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks.
Next is Andrew, I think, Austin.
My name is Andrew Austin. I live at 1256 Porlier Street, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54301.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
You've attached this. Did you want all board members to get a copy?
To refer to later, I only bought like three copies. I realized I didn't have enough for everybody, so...
Okay, all right. So I'll have Sandy make us copies.
And I'll make a reference to that in just a second.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I come to you today to argue against the district's dress code. I have four arguments, two based on the First and Fourteenth Amendments to U.S. Constitution and related legislative and judicial actions, and two based on the problem of stereotyping and stigmatization. I won't have time to get to them all, so I urge the board to read my longer statement, which we were just talking about. And I'm happy to speak to board members at greater length about the logic of the arguments. In the time I have, I want to take up the question of head coverings, and in particular, hoodies. District policy states that head coverings are not allowed, and I looked at the latest manual, and it's current, I believe, through today, are not allowed in the school building during the school day, with an exception that they may wear head coverings for religious reasons. This is problematic from a constitutional standpoint. The Establishment Clause of the First Amendment obliges public institutions to remain neutral on questions of religion. If a freedom is curtailed or expanded, it must be for secular reasons, and the restriction must equally apply, and the freedom open to all. Accommodations must not privilege some students while limiting others. As I'll show, there's no rational reason for restricting headgear, but rather an irrational one, and the religious accommodation indicts this policy. The Civil Rights Act of 1964 outlines discrimination based on race, religion, and other categories. Religious discrimination is analogous to race discrimination in this law. Brown versus Board of Education in 1954 determined that the doctrine of separate but equal is inconsistent with constitutional principle. It is inherently unequal to separate, limit, or privilege students on the basis of race. Would the district ever consider instituting a policy that permits white students access to head coverings, hoodies, for example, but prohibits black students from wearing them? This violates the Civil Rights Act because it treats individuals differently on the basis of race. Yet the district enforces a policy that treats people differently on the basis of religion. This is a pernicious double standard. Moreover, the double standard rests on implicit stereotypes, one indicating virtue, the other indicating disrepute. The assumption is that religious students who wear head coverings are not dangerous or violent, or are not using head coverings to hide headphones, or weapons, or concealing their identity, or that head coverings are not distracting, are all reasons given for why hoodies should be banned in school. If any of these reasons were legitimate, then religious head covering should not be exempted, since all the possibilities identified apply in that case as well. Yet other students, in particular minority youth, especially males, are assumed likely to be using head coverings for these illicit purposes. It sees them as unsafe, and this is prejudicial to them. Without determining on an individual basis whether students are using head coverings for illicit purposes, a ban with exceptions means concrete individuals are treated as personifications of abstract groups about which, for some, bad intentions are assumed, while others motives are deemed good intentioned. And this is why, in May of this year, students at the Uplift Community High School in Chicago overturned a rule that banned hoodies on their campus, and the students at Uplift argued that the ban fed into harmful misconceptions about hoodies being associated with criminal activities, misconceptions based on racial stereotypes. Individual freedom means that individuals are treated as such, not judged on the basis of abstract groupings. And finally, the policy could consider all the exemptions that would allow students with alopecia, cancer, disfigurements, and other stigmatizing problems that for them necessitate head coverings, and presumably, such accommodations are within the principal's discretionary power. However, just as the policy implies head coverings are disreputable for certain classes of people, exceptions for nonreligious reasons spotlights what effective students likely wish to conceal. It makes a potential stigma conspicuous. Students should not have to explain to anybody why they wear head coverings. And I urge the district to retire this policy and allow students to dress and express themselves in a manner that they and their parents see fit. If attire and grooming are found to meet exceptions identified in the Tinker Standard, established by the Supreme Court in 1965, and I'm happy to explain that further, then this can be determined and should be on a case-by-case basis, as it should be in a society of individuals who are treated as such before the law, and not reduced to representatives of abstract impositions and subject to prior restraint. It is not the place of the district to police students' clothing and messaging, especially in a manner that grants privileges to some and discriminates against others. No student should enjoy preferential treatment on the basis of race, religion, nationality, or other categories identified in our laws, but should enjoy equal treatment before the law, which should move in the direction of expanding personal liberty, not limiting it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just leave this on.
Next is Christopher Babe.
Full name and address? Christopher Babe, 3000 Neuen Lane, Green Bay, Wisconsin. I took the time to come tonight to talk about the dress code myself. I think it's a very important means of trying to address what I consider the lack of respect and dignity in the classrooms. And I go back 25, 30 years to when I was in school, and how the kids talk, dress, and address their elders is a lot less respectful than it was 30 years ago. So how do you do that? I think it's how you speak, how you act, and how you dress. Dress is a very important thing. You are, you know, who you are by the clothes you wear and how you present yourself. And I want to have our students presenting themselves in a respectful and nice manner, just like our teachers and principals do. They don't wear hoodies in their classrooms. They don't have their pants down past their crack. And I think it's a deterrent, a deterrent for the teacher to see, trying to lecture and see hats or hoodies, and it has no benefit to educating. What would be the benefit of having a hoodie up or a hat on in a classroom? So I asked the board to reject the proposal of having hats and hoodies on in the classroom, and frankly, I think it should be addressed. I know it can't be tonight, but the cell phones also should be in the locker room. There's... We need to have kids listen and educators educate. And that's the way I think I would like to see the classrooms conducted. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Next is Betty Kasek.
Hello, Betty Kasek, 2346 Browning Road, speaking for myself. As you may or may not know, there's a plethora, a flurry, I give you, of bills that have come out since September 27th, and again, updates on October 7th and October 11th, and I became quite concerned about the amount of the bills that are being considered in the Assembly and the Senate. And I was able to talk to Laura McCoy today, our legislative liaison. Thank you, Laura. And she updated me a little bit, and I understand that Dr. Langenfeld may be speaking to some of these tonight, but I'm just going to go over these quickly so that the public is aware, very short as I can. So there is one about character education that has to do with grants, changing special education licensure, which I'm sure will be very interesting for all of our special education teachers, because it makes exceptions for particular licensed areas, which could open doors to more carving out of exceptions in specific licensing areas, and lowers standards for special education teachers, teachers who serve Wisconsin's most intellectually vulnerable population. That already passed the Assembly, so it only has to pass the Senate. There's a change... There possibly might be a change to kindergarten enrollments for 4K, who are now only considered a half a pupil and might go up to .6. A bill about feasibility studies for consolidation of school districts, and grade sharing. So I'm assuming this is for rural areas. And also, another... Some are grants, and some are flat-out direct funds for shared services for possibly administrative personnel, shared across school districts. This one, we know about already, the Dyslexia Guidebook, which is good, because we at least know about something. There's a minority teacher loan program. This one's concerning pupil records, expanding pupil information allowed to be disclosed by a public school to include the names of parents or guardians. And then it goes on to explain what they can disclose now, and what other changes there might be. Changes to safety drills and the notice that's given. Out-of-state teacher license reciprocity changes, which has an Assembly and a Senate bill number. This one I will single out because for this part of the conversation, I... Green Bay advocates... We'll be sending a letter to probably the board, to the Assembly and the Senate on that one. So back to speaking for myself. Teacher preparation to allow flexibility for student teaching hours so that aspiring educators can spread their required hours out over a longer period of time. All the blue ribbon bills suggested and are commonly supported, so I won't go into all those. And there's a whole list proposed by the Democrats. There's suicide prevention, grants for peer-to-peer programs, some voucher changes, which are minor about voucher schools reporting and being accredited. And last but not least, there are five bills in the Assembly about American Indian Studies. One, two, three, four, five, yes. So I think it would behoove us to, as a district, to lead, inform, and advise parents, families, community members, students, teachers, and all staff, including peer professionals, about some of these bills, especially the more concerning and important ones. And in conclusion, I would just like to say that not only, I would hope that our district could not only be a leader in our community, but in the entire state for guiding common sense, good policies in the state legislature. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Thank you, Betty. Next is Dan Gage.
Dan Gage, 1326 Wolverine Trail. I'm a teacher at Green Bay West High School, and I'm also a Green Bay City taxpayer. I wanted to speak to you about the dress code, and I'm speaking to you as an individual and as a teacher with more than 30 years of classroom experience. I want to just quickly address some of the legal aspects that were brought up by a previous speaker. In the Tinker Rule, or I should say, the Tinker Ruling, said that armbands that students were wearing to protest the Vietnam War did not cause a substantial disruption to the learning environment. However, schools have been given wide latitude regarding regulating a number of different rights that students might have outside of school, but not inside of school, as being, in some cases, significantly disruptive to the school process. I'm here to tell you that hats and hoodies are significantly disruptive to the school, to the learning process. I'm not speaking to you because I think it's rude for people to wear hats indoors. I'm not speaking to you because I believe that, you know, students should never have a head covering or a hat in school. That, to me, is not a good enough reason to not allow hoods and hatties, sorry, hats and hoodies, in school. But what I, and I'll make this point as well, if you gave me the choice between engaged learners who all had hats and hoodies and disengaged students who didn't have any hats or hoodies, I would choose the hats and hoodies engaged learners every time. But I am telling you, that is not what I am seeing in the classroom. What I am seeing in the classroom is that hats and hoods are used to disengage by some students, not all students, by some students, from the learning process. For hoodies, oftentimes, it's pull them over the head, put the earbuds in, difficult for a teacher to see what, you know, if the student is paying attention, because frankly, you can't tell what's going on there. Hats pulled down low, can't make any eye contact with students, can't get any understanding of whether or not they are with me in a lesson. So that is a concern. I will also just finish with one more point, and that is that hats and hoodies are not specific to any one race or ethnicity. All of our students are, at times, wearing hats and hoodies, regardless of their race, ethnicity, and gender. So I do not see it as an issue that is specifically targeting one group or another. I would ask that you do what is best for learners in the classroom. That's what I believe you are all about, and I'm, you know, just letting you know that that's my observation, and it's sort of a longstanding one. This phenomenon has been going on for, you know, closing in on five years now. And I have to say that it's becoming more prevalent, and it's becoming a bigger problem year by year, so thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Rhonda?
Thank you. Just a question to clarify. So you feel that the hats and hoodies are disengaging?
Some students.
Some students, okay. Is it your understanding, do you believe then, if they were to take their hood off or pull their hat up, that they would instantly engage?
I understand that that's not, that's not something that necessarily is going to result in it, but what I'm saying is it makes it much easier for a student to disengage when they can pull a hoodie over their head and put earbuds in. Taking that hoodie off would certainly let me know that there's earbuds in their ears, and that is, as you might imagine, that's pretty disengaging to be listening to whatever during class.
Just want, so do you believe then maybe it wouldn't be more about what they're listening to versus the earphones? I'm just curious.
Well, if they were listening to historical podcasts, I'd...
Sure, but I mean, but I'm assuming that the device is not something that was given in the class, right?
No, the device is certainly something that they have along with them.
So it could potentially be that that really is the disruption?
I think that, actually, I think they go hand in hand.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Next one, I'm going to ask Cheyenne, and Cheyenne, where are you? There you are. You have wish to speak and do not wish to speak, both checked. I just didn't want to call on you if you... Did you want to speak? Yes, then please, come forward. I didn't want to make you speak if you didn't want to speak, so. Okay, go ahead, and if you, the button on your right that looks like a profile of a mouth, press that when you want to speak. Only one can be on at a time, so you'd like to speak first, push that button and go ahead and push your, who's speaking?
I'll speak.
You'll start, okay, so push your button then. There.
Okay.
All right. And name and address first, please.
Cheyenne, 02360 Pecon Street, number 16, Green Bay, 54311. My son attends Edison, and this is his first year in the Green Bay Public School District. And since he started school this year, he's had several different incidents with one student, and I'm having a hard time getting the administration at Edison to treat it as a bullying incident. So I come here for clarification on the proper procedures to follow and who's responsible, who does he report to, things of that nature.
Okay. Do you want to take that?
Thank you, and I'm sorry, that's your experience. That would not be what we would like for you, so know that. And I appreciate you coming forward. I'm going to turn to Mr. Magus, our Associate Superintendent, and he will meet with you right now, if you would be amenable to do that, so that we can start working together to address this, so you have a better experience, because that's not okay.
Okay.
Oh, so you're Devonte, then. Okay, I've got your form, too. Go ahead, Devonte, and push your button. There you go.
Okay, so I'm here today to talk about the dress code, dealing with hoodies, hats, and et cetera, because me, myself, I have, I get angry very easily, so I like to have a hoodie on to prevent that from, like, it's kind of like a sign saying, like, can you, like, not talk to me right now? I'm going through stuff, or I'm a little irritated, because you don't want to have to have to talk to a teacher and then get into an argument or another peer. So it's kind of a thing to be able to put up a hat or a hoodie to just show that, and maybe it's even a part of outfit. But if the teacher sees you, like, not paying attention, or like, having headphones in under your hoodie, they can easily just ask you to take it off, and or you're having problems with learning, they can ask you to take it off if it's being a problem, but it should be allowed to be a privilege to have it on if needed, because you don't want to have be in a bad mood and walk up to your best friend and them say, hey, and you retaliate, well, not retaliate, be very hostile and very agitated towards them, because that's not setting good example for other people, and also not being just a good person.
Thank you. Thank you, Devonte.
Thank you.
Then John, John's going to catch you on the... Yeah. Is there anyone else who would like to speak before the board? Right, so none, we will move to the rest of our agenda. Entertain a motion under minutes.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right. The minutes have been approved. Next is monitoring reports, and that'll be facilitated by Laura McCoy.
We're going to be hearing an update on ESSA.
You want to...
Is that John?
Is that John?
And ESSA is the Every Student Succeeds Act.
Sorry, yes.
Which is what replaced No Child Left Behind as federal legislation.
Yep. Joining us at the table is our Director for ESSA, Lisa Bynum. Welcome, Lisa, and I know she's our resident expert who has worked tirelessly in partnership with the state, the Department of Public Instruction, because through the changes, it's been very critical that we have every detail so that we can be responsive to the requests out there and be compliant with what's expected, but most importantly, be able to execute what is expected in the best interests of our students and families. So I appreciate what you're doing, so thank you.
Sure. I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity to share a little bit more about ESSA and the work being done under that umbrella. It's multifaceted, and I think that there's nobody better to express the different facets of that work than Ms. Bynum. And regarding the other situation that we were just tending to, we do have somebody tending to that right now as well, and I'll be following up just as a prelude to that. But I wanted to make sure that we were here to present the monitoring report as well.
All right. Good evening. I'll be talking to you tonight about ESSA. I'll be giving you an overview of ESSA, and then a little bit deeper dive into the federal accountability portion of ESSA. There are some federal notifications that we've had, there are some requirements that go along with those, so we'll be talking about those, and how we will be approving, monitoring, and supporting those efforts. ESSA is the national education law that ensures equality education for all, and to that end, equity is the center, and there are critical protections in place for economically disadvantaged students and our higher-need students. So one of the pieces that is in place to that end is high academic standards. This is something that has been in place in the past. However, high academic standards was not a requirement across all states. So under ESEA, the, there wasn't as high of a requirement of that, but under ESSA, all states have to have high academic standards. And then in order to accomplish that and monitor that, there are statewide annual assessments. So that would be what you see in our state report card, would be those statewide annual assessments, so that's state testing. So in each state, the testing would be different, and would be reported differently. Then there is the school accountability system, which now is a federal accountability system, which is consistent from state to state. So there are certain federal notifications that go out that it's looked at identically from state to state and specific categories, and we will get into that more deeply in future slides. And then all of those things together are used to come up with plans for the lowest-performing schools. So what is in ESSA? There are a lot of grants and rules and requirements under ESSA, so I'm going to very briefly go through these. It's a long list. Title 1A is Improving Academic Achievement of Disadvantaged Students. That is approximately a $6 million grant that we get each year as a district. In our district, we use it for, at the elementary level, we do something called grade span grouping. We would get the same amount of money, whether we used all of the money at the elementary level or we used at K-12. And I am responsible for managing that grant, and together Nancy Chartier and I do the programming for the Title 1 grant. Title 1C is migrant education. We get a much smaller amount for that. It's about $14,000 that we get, and that funds a portion of the migrant recruiter. The responsibility of the migrant recruiter is to identify migrant students in our district so that we know who those students are, so that we're able to provide them with services. Title 1D is the Neglected and Delinquent Program, which we'll be talking a little bit more in depth further in the presentation. We get about $180,000 of funding for Title 1D, and those funds are used at the Juvenile Detention Center at the Brown County Jail, as well as the adult jail, as we also have students in adult jail, and at shelter care. I do the management of that grant, and Lynn Eldrich, who is the principal at Monocca, does the programming for that grant. Title 2A is teacher and principal training. That funding is used for literacy coaches and Chris trainers, which are curriculum resource implementation specialists at the elementary level. In addition, we have some focus on the leadership of literacy practices across the district and some training, and that grant is approximately $1 million. I do the management of that grant, and Nancy Chartier does the programming for that grant. Title 3 is language instruction for English learners. That is approximately a $500,000 grant. Julie Seifeld and Gina Cornu do the programming for that grant, and Julie Seifeld does the management of that grant. Title 4A is student support and academic enrichment. That is approximately $400,000. This is our third year with that grant. The grant is used mostly for school counselors. There was previously a grant that was written in... and those funds are used at the Juvenile Detention Center at the Brown County Jail, as well as the adult jail, as we also have students in adult jail, and at shelter care. I do the management of that grant and Lynn Eldrich does, who is the principal at Menorca, does the programming for that grant. Title 2A is Teacher and Principal Training. That funding is used for literacy coaches and CRIS trainers, which are curriculum resource implementation specialists at the elementary level. In addition, we have some focus on the leadership of literacy practices across the district and some training. And that grant is approximately $1 million. I do the management of that grant and Nancy Chartier does the programming for that grant. Title 3 is Language Instruction for English Learners. That is approximately a $500,000 grant. Julie Seifeld and Gina Cornu do the programming for that grant. And Julie Seifeld does the management of that grant. Title 4A is Student Support and Academic Enrichment. That is approximately $400,000. This is our third year with that grant. The grant is used mostly for school counselors. There was previously a grant that was written in the district that was expiring and about four, the equivalent of four full-time counselors were funded. And so this grant came in at a time. It's an allowable cost under this grant. So a decision was made to continue funding the school counselors because it was seen as a need. In addition, there is a social work for the, social worker for the Teenage Parent Program at Preble High School. There is funding for web leaders at the middle schools and some additional social work time to do some home visits and those types of things. I do the management of that grant and Vicky Byer does the programming for that grant. Title 4B is the 21st Century Community Learning Centers, so essentially our after-school programs. That grant is about $1 million. And Lisa Johnson does the management of that grant and along with Andrea Landwehr does the programming for that grant. Title 6 is Indian Education. We get almost $300,000 in funding for that grant. That grant, we work directly with the federal government on that grant, the Office of Indian Education. I do the management of that grant and Katie Solzer and Vicky Byer work together on the programming for that grant. Education for Homeless Children and Youth, also referred to as EHCY or MKV, McKinney-Vento, is approximately a $70,000 grant. We also fund efforts for education of homeless children and youth through some requirements under Title 1A. I supervise the McKinney-Vento program and also do the grant management and the programming for that grant. Then equitable participation for private schools is a large requirement under ESSA. The private schools are entitled to participate in ESSA. And there's a consultation process that I go through each year with the private schools. There are two principal meetings per year, one in the fall, one in the spring, that all private school principals are invited to, along with a number of different district representatives. We have transportation there, special education, English learners program, school safety and security, after-school programming. My office coordinates everything with the private schools, but as you heard, we have a lot of different departments that are involved in that. Each year, we go through a process where they decide whether or not they're going to participate in ESSA. We have 17 private schools within the Green Bay attendance areas. Of those, 12 participate in ESSA. Additionally, there are three private schools that are outside of the Green Bay District that participate in Title 1 because some of our students attend those private schools. The equitable participation applies to Title 1. For Title 1, they get approximately $390,000 of funding, which equates to 6.4% of our overall funding. We have 3.5 FTE of interventionists that we train and provide to the private schools. The amount of teaching time that they get is based on the number of students that they have who are students that qualify for Direct Cert and are living in Title 1 attendance areas. So it's basically the same qualification for funding as we have for our public school students. It's a formula that's followed. So those principals that participate, those schools that participate in Title 1, the private schools, I do one-on-one consultations with them. And in addition, they can participate in Title 2, the Professional Learning, Title 3, the English Learners, Title 4, the Student Support and Academic Enrichment. They have to have a professional development plan that they share with us and then I manage those funds for them and pre-approve all expenditures. I do individual consultations with them and those schools that have English learners that participate in Title 3, Julie Seifeld, is also a part of those consultations.
So it's important as we look at these, it's important as we look at these various aspects of our ESSA funding that you understand the different components because of the substantial amount of money, but also in knowing that these are allocated according to specific focus areas that the government has indicated in which they need to be spent. We also work very hard to make sure that it's integrated into the way we serve the district as a whole. So if there are certain specific needs that are not being addressed in other areas, we look to find ways of addressing them through our title funding, as well as to make sure that whatever we're doing in title is congruent with our supports for the district as a whole.
So what is new in ESSA? The Department of Public Construction has a new monitoring cycle. So because we are one of the larger districts in the state, they will monitor us once every three years. They require that we have an ESSA coordinator, that each district has an ESSA coordinator. So I am that ESSA coordinator and they will come in and do monitoring on what's called consolidated programs and then on each of the, of the different title areas that we discussed previously. They look at things like how we handle fiduciary responsibilities, how we determine what our local needs are, what our district professional development plan is, how we provide equitable services to private schools, public reporting requirements, parents' right to know, et cetera. They have two different pieces that they do. They ask us to submit a lot of information to them ahead of time, which they will be monitoring us early in 2020. We don't have a specific date yet. They review all that information and then they come for a one-day monitoring visit to make sure that we are meeting all of the requirements. I do have a link there for you if you want to see specifically what we are monitored on. The LEA ESSA Plan is another new requirement. It is a series of narrative questions. Some are separate from the title applications and some are embedded within our grant applications that we answer as a district and that we revise on a yearly basis. Transportation for Out-of-Home Placements or Foster Care is new. We used to fund transportation for out-of-home placements. We were able to fund that through McKinney-Vento. We are no longer able to do it that way. We have agreements with the county in which we have a process for our best interest determination of which school the students in foster care should attend. And then we have shared costs with the county. If we have transportation costs, we split it with them and/or if we are transporting them to a district, to another district, we share the costs with that district also. And those costs now come out of a Title 1 set aside. Another new thing under ESSA is school funding reporting, which is the per pupil expenditure at each school. So last school year, we were required to do this for the first time and that was earlier in the year. We had to report, in the 1819 year, we had to report what was budgeted at each school. And that is not just local funds, it's all funds. So for instance, if a school were getting Title 1 funds, that would be included. So you would be able to see the amount budgeted and they, they show that in terms of a, what is the cost to educate a student? So a per pupil expenditure cost at each school. And of course, then you'll see a difference. You should see a difference. If it's a Title 1 school, you would see a higher per pupil cost because if you didn't, then we would be supplanting, which I'll explain a little bit in the next bullet. You also might see a higher per pupil cost if it's a very small school or if there are special programs in the school that other schools would not have. There is also a methodology requirement that's new and that is basically a formula. So a formula that would indicate how we staff. So for instance, every elementary school, we use local funds for a 50% reading interventionist and a 50% math interventionist. And so that's just a per-school formula. So it doesn't matter if it's a very small school or a very large school. They would get a 50% math interventionist and a 50% reading interventionist. Another example of a methodology would be based on the number of students. So for instance, student services, a school counselor or a social worker would be, the methodology would be based on the number of students in the school. So it kind of depends on how many resources there are to go around. The reason for the methodology requirement is the Supplement Supplant Rule under Title 1. Title 1 says that you have to have a district formula in place so that you make sure that all the Title 1 schools are getting all of the district-funded positions they should be getting. And then on top of that, we bring in the supplemental Title 1 funds so that you can say, oh, we aren't going to use local funds or district funds for a math interventionist. We're going to provide that with Title 1 funds instead. Then you would be supplanting. The accountability system is new. The accountability system that's nationwide, that's the same in all states and we'll be getting to that a little bit deeper. And then the Educator Equity Plan. So we were one of eight districts in the state that was identified for having inexperienced teachers, which is defined as teachers with under three years' experience or teachers not licensed, serving disadvantaged, economically disadvantaged students or students of color at a higher rate. As a result, we needed to come up with an educator equity plan in order to address that and that is also part of the LEA ESSA Plan. So now all districts, whether they are identified or not, need to have an educator equity plan as part of their LEA ESSA Plan. Okay, and I had referred to the methodology and I just wanted to really clearly state that for you that we must ensure that Title 1 schools receive all of the state and local funds and resources they would have received if they didn't participate in Title 1 and that we can't take away state or local funds from Title 1 schools because they are Title 1 schools. The change in this is that previous to ESSA, we also could not provide more local funds to a Title 1 school if this, if there were more students of poverty in that school. That rule is no longer in place. So it provides us a little bit more flexibility than previously. Hey, one thing that I wanted to highlight for you is how some of our grants work together. So the Title 1 Grant and the Education for Homeless Children and Youth Grant work together because there are requirements under Title 1 for serving students experiencing homelessness. So for students experiencing homelessness in non-Title 1 schools, we must use Title 1 funds to address their needs. So the thinking behind this requirement is that students experiencing homelessness in a Title 1 school get those supplemental supports. If they are in a non-Title 1 school, those supports wouldn't be in place. So we want to use Title 1 funds to come in and provide those supports. So at the elementary level, we have a teacher that travels between non-Title 1 schools to provide that support. And then at the high schools, we have Title 1 paraprofessionals who are also now starting to transition and provide some supports at the middle schools. They, there's, we have a referral process in place. They work with students who need academic supports and need those connections. And they work with them on things like homework completion, missing assignments. And they also model for the students how to make those connections with teachers and advocate for themselves if they have missing work that maybe the teacher has said it's past the deadline to make up the work. The paraprofessional will help the student with how to navigate that and how to talk with the teacher. And I wanted to highlight our graduation rates, how they've gone up. The high school Title 1 paraprofessionals started working with our students experiencing homelessness in the 1415 school year. At that time, our graduation rate for students experiencing homelessness was 51.5%. As of the 2017-18 school year, the graduation rate for those students was up to 73.5%.
And I think that's an important point of pride. If you look, our graduation rate as a whole went up during that time period by 5%, which is something that I think, it's still not, we need it to be 100%, but a 5% increase is admirable. But looking at the rate of our students that are experiencing homelessness to take it from around 50% to nearly 75% reaching graduation in a short period of time, I think speaks to the hard work that Lisa and really the staff that are involved in the McKinney-Vento program have been able to do to change that trajectory for our kids.
Okay, the Title 1 Neglected and Delinquent Program is funding that we first applied for three years ago. And as I said, this serves students at the Brown County Jail and at shelter care. We've been able to make quite a few improvements just by improving the communication between the district and the facilities. We have formal agreements in place that we review on an annual basis. We've been able to increase in teacher instruction time. We have an additional 1.3 FTE of teacher time that we're able to provide at the facilities, as well as a full-time counselor who's focused on transitions. So transitions from the facility back to their school or to the community or to higher ad. We also put classroom libraries in place. The students now have journals for reading response and we also have had graduation ceremonies in the jail, which did not take place in the past. Families aren't able to attend those, but that's the type of work that our counselor who focuses on the transitions is able to do. For instance, she had the families write a letter to the students that were graduating in the jail and then read the letters out loud at the graduation ceremony. And it was really, a really moment of pride for those students. And you know, when they have something positive to build on, going back to school or back into the community, it's a good thing for everyone. We also used fundings for upgrades to the learning environment. And I mean, I can't overstate how much the students loved the classroom libraries and used the classroom libraries, constantly suggesting new books that they'd like in the libraries, checking out a high volume of books and, you know, talking about books that they hope they get the chance to read while they're still in the facility. Okay, and now into the accountability system, the federal identifications. There's basically three categories, CSI, TSI, and ATS. CSI, we have one Comprehensive Support and Improvement School. It's Nicolay Elementary School. And in order to be identified as a comprehensive school, you would be in the, the student achievement across the board would be in the bottom 5% of all schools in the state or a graduation rate below 67% if you were a high school. The identifications occur every three years and schools may exit after two years. In order to exit, the earliest exit date is June of 2021. And they will, DPI will have a progress exit report to us by December of 2020. There are three different criteria. They are both quantitative and qualitative. There's a threshold for being a CSI school, which of course would change each time that new schools are identified because there will always be a bottom 5%. So if all of the students in the state do better or all the students in the state do worse, that threshold number will change. So in order to exit, you have to be above the threshold as it was the year you were identified and the current year. You have to have shown improvement and you also have to have systems and structures in place that ensure high-quality practices and improvement planning. The targeted support and improvement and additional targeted support improvement are specific to student groups. So if you are a student group, for instance, let's say, English learners. If you are a TSI school, that means, or if you are a TSI identification, if the English learners at that school were a school in and of themselves as compared to all other English learners in the state and were in the bottom 10%, they would be a TSI school. ATS, exactly the same, except it's the bottom 5%.
And I think part, part of the reason why we wanted to focus on this aspect was because when the board talks about wanting a progress monitoring report on ESSA, I think part, one of the assumption is, is that we were talking about the schools that were identified, and we wanted to, some more explanation about what those school, which schools were identified and what that process for serving those schools would look like. But we also wanted the board to understand the greater breadth of, of what falls under the ESSA funding, as well as the, the servicing. So we, we realize that it's going from broad to narrow, but it was intentional with hoping to, to answer any questions that the board may have.
The next two slides are simply a listing of the school identifications. So the school, what their identification was, and what the student groups were. Okay, now moving into the accountability requirements. The CSI school much, must have a needs assessment, including a root cause analysis. However, this is something that we do at all of our schools through our regular school success process. You must identify resource inequities. DPI actually has a tool for doing this, which, that per pupil expenditure report that I referred to earlier is all, is actually going to be a part of that tool when the information is available publicly. That's one of the things they want you looking at and considering. You have to select an evidence-based improvement strategy, and develop a plan to implement that strategy. Engage families and community in the planning, and then implement with fidelity. If you are a CSI school, as Nicolay is, DPI will approve your plan and monitor your plan. If you are a TSI school or an ATS school, the district has to have a process in place for approving and monitoring the plan. And our, our process that we use as a district for school success planning, we have a rubric that addresses many of the requirements under ESSA. For those requirements that aren't addressed in our rubric, for instance, identifying resource inequities, or involving families and community in the planning, there is a DPI rubric that the executive directors will use when they are approving the plans of the schools. And then more about the evidence-based improvement strategies. Each school needs to select an evidence-based improvement strategy, and there are two different processes to go through. I already referenced number two, which is the district's process or guide to continuous improvement in our school success planning process, which is what all of our schools, except for Nicolay, are using this year. Nicolay is using a tool called the Data Inquiry Journal Tool. All schools have seen this tool and had an overview of this tool. At this time, Nicolay is the only school using it. However, when you use this tool, it automatically addresses all the requirements under ESSA. And John, did you want to say something about the continuous improvement?
Sure. So as we were working on our continuous improvement work as a district, and as we were working on the ESSA continuous improvement work that's expected by the state and federal governments, we wanted to make sure that they were complementary and supportive of one, one another. So we wanted to make sure that our guide for continuous improvement was a strong consideration for how we were focusing on improvement within those schools. Our, as we've reported to the board previously, there are three non-negotiable leadership, instructional leadership areas that we're, we've called out and have a deep focus on, and also have set as part of our progress monitoring with the board this year, and plan to have in, in future years if it meets the needs of the, the board. But the three leadership focus areas that we, we call out in, in great detail, but the basic summary is professional learning and growth, focus to maximize achievement, high-performing teams using data to maximize achievement, thinking about our LS, our learning support teams, and our building, leadership teams, and our, our, our teacher teams working together in their CLTs. That's, that's the work that they're doing, as well as performance evaluation and feedback focused on maximizing achievement. And when we look through those, those areas, we're also making sure that we focus on those areas through an equity lens. So if we're thinking about our high-performing teams, we want to make sure that as they're examining, for example, formative assessments in a social studies collaborative learning team, that they're thinking about it through an, an lens of equity, looking at which students, student groups are doing well, which student groups are, are struggling, and what can they do to change their instructional practices so that they best meet those areas. Those three areas will be monitored for, by the board, as I mentioned, three, three times annually. And the first opportunity for, for insight into that school success planning process will be next month, as we come with our progress monitoring report on school success planning and information shared there.
Okay, so then the final slide here just touches on some of the things, oops. The final slide touches on some of the things John already mentioned, how we will approve. We have our district process rubric, and along with that, DPI has a rubric if, if when, in the cases where some of those requirements are missing. The executive directors will be approving those plans. And John already talked about the monthly monitoring, and the three times a year at AEP, and also board progress monitoring, and offering support through our school success planning group monitoring process, and then supervisor support on school problems of practice.
So this month, part of what we're, we'll be doing is a deeper review of our school success plans by all departments in the district, looking at them for a lens of what, what patterns do we see in the, the various school success plans, and how can we align our resources to make sure that we're aligned to support and empower the schools to address those plans. Traditionally in a district, the plans are reviewed to look for what are the things that we suggest. Will we, sometimes people come at it with a red pen, thinking you need more of this in your plan, you need a little less of that in your plan, how come you're not doing this? And there, there are aspects as, as far as guidance, but this is really an intention for us to look at what are the patterns of need and the patterns of support that are being identified by the schools? And then how do we, as a district, not just move forward with our agendas for our individual departments, but how are we looking at the true needs of the schools as our, as our customers, and aligning our supports to maximize their success? So that's, that's something that we'll be sharing in greater detail in our November progress monitoring report, as well as a mid-year report focusing on how are the, how are the schools doing on their school success plans? And an end-of-year report looking at what was, what were the end results of, of those school success plans, and what are next steps for the coming year?
Go ahead, Christina.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, Lisa.
Is there a district committee that helps to develop the, the district funding plan? And where are we with that? Because I saw in your notes here, it said, one of the requirements was engaging families and communities.
When you say district funding.
When you say district funding plan, what are you referring to?
It's okay.
The allocation of the funding throughout, throughout our ESSA plan. So it says in here that engaging families and communities in that planning process is part of the requirement. So how are we doing that? And is there some sort of formal committee and?
So each grant is different. And so for instance, I'll talk a little bit about Title I. That's one of our largest, that, that is our largest grant. Each school engages families, and that's a requirement under Title I in a variety of ways. So they have family events presenting certain information, and then they'll have exit tickets as families are leaving the event. Another way is they'll have a principal coffee where they'll have specific topics they're discussing and gathering input on. They have a meeting at the beginning of the year and the end of the year where they share goals and progress and ask for input. They do surveys on different topics. So it's a little bit different from school to school, but they are all required to have the input from the parents, and, and they do it in the way that works best for their school. We do not get to decide how much money we get for the grants, and in terms of how the, for instance, Title I funding is split between the schools, that's determined by how many students you have that are economically disadvantaged, living within that attendance area for that school.
Thank you. Follow up to that. But families and communities can participate in the conversation of how that money is spent. They can't determine how much money we get, but they can participate in that conversation of how it shows up in their school. Correct?
Yes, and I would say that they're probably not directly asked, how would you like us to spend the money? But are asked for feedback on the goals and how the plan is being carried out. So if the parent input would be that they would like to see, they feel that the school doesn't have enough reading interventionists, then that input would be used to determine how the funds are spent.
Sorry, I have a few more. So staying with the community engagement, and, and now I'd like to shift a little bit to staff. We, the, the federal government is providing $1.17 billion for 1920 as part of Title IV Part A, which is the block grants, right? This is around support and academic enrichment programs. So are we, what, what are we doing to support our educators and our district staff and to empower them to be part of that conversation so that when that money is provided to the district, that the different departments and learning teams can advocate for what they need in their schools?
So.
Hit your button.
I manage that grant. I do not determine the programming for that grant. Vicky Byer determines the programming for that grant. And what I would say about how we're using the funding and how we came to that is we have different tools that we use, the YRBS, for instance, that has shown that we have a need for student services. And so that is mostly how that funding is used at, at this time. In terms of staff input, at, I, I don't believe that we've reached a point that there is additional funding available beyond what we're already using for the student services.
Thank you. And I don't expect you to have all of the answers here. I do think that I would like to see an opportunity for us to educate and empower staff to be a part of that conversation. Specifically for me, I'm thinking about health and physical education as one specific example. There are funds out there, and I would like to just see additional opportunities for empowerment of staff to be able to advocate for what they need so that they can have not only the facilities that they need, but the equipment as well. So that's kind of what I was trying to get at, and I appreciate your response. Thank you.
Any other questions? Rhonda?
I have two questions. First, can you clarify just for people in the, in the room and people watching, shelter care? Yes, what would you like to know about shelter care?
Just in general, what it is? Because I think there's a lot of people that probably aren't aware of what that is and how it relates to our work.
I can tell you a little bit about what happens at shelter care. It's a facility that houses students who are placed there by a court order, who are experiencing difficulties. Sometimes it's a, could be a family situation or a situation in the community, and it's a short-term placement. It's 30 days or less. So the students that are there, for the most part, they go to their home school for the educate, for their education. There are some students, for a variety of reasons, that cannot leave the facility during the day, and in that case, we have a teacher come in.
And I have another question. You had mentioned the educator equity plan. What is the status of that? And where is that? Is that, I may, I missed it maybe, is it already in place? Is there a plan, for the plan? Just wondering about that.
Yes, the plan is already in place. There are some specific, let's see, I could give you an example. If a position that is hard to fill, that requires a license area that would, will be hard to backfill, let's say a teacher leaves a position that, and, a position for bilingual and goes into a regular classroom position, and then that position is not able to be filled, we would, after a certain date, move the teacher back into the bilingual position so that we don't have, add to our number of non-licensed teachers teaching students of color, or students that are higher, of higher disadvantaged, economically disadvantaged. That would be an example, but there are, there are several things within that policy that would try to support having teachers with more experience and licensed teachers in the schools that are the highest poverty schools and with students of color.
Go ahead.
And I just wanted to, it's linked on our PowerPoint, the plan. Rhonda, under the educator equity plan, it looks like it's one thing, but it's the second half of that is the specific to our district.
I do want to point out just for, for a moment that we do have a number of efforts underway related to recruiting and retaining high-quality teachers, particularly looking at, at all teachers, but, but focusing also on diversifying our workforce. And that work is being done through the Centers Grant that we're working on in conjunction with the GBEA, as well as some other things that we, we've been exploring related to best practices of some of the, the partner districts with whom we're working, related to creating grow-your-own-teacher pipelines and things of that nature. So it is something that, under our thriving workforce agenda, and with the new leadership of Terry Willems, is certainly to be central to the work we're doing within our, our, our human resources department and teaching and learning and throughout the district.
Does anyone else have any more questions? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
All right, next we have superintendent's updates. I'll turn that over to Dr. Langenfeld.
Thank you, Brenda. I'm going to begin with the calendar, and on October 24th, right here in the boardroom, we have an ICSC meeting at 7:30 in the morning, and then that same day, a special board meeting at 1:00 right here in the boardroom. On October 25th, it is fall recess. October 28th is the public hearing and adoption of the 2019-20 budget, and that's right here at 6:00 in the boardroom, Room 331. November 4th, we have teaching and learning at 6:00, immediately followed by the organizational support work session, again here in the boardroom. November 6th is the school times, start time task force meeting for the group at CISA VII at 6:00. The 18th is our regular board meeting at 6:00, and again, here in the boardroom. November 20th, again, the school start times task force is meeting, and then we have Thanksgiving recess in November 28th and 29th. So a lot of things happening. So I'm going to switch gears and go to the next item, which are some success stories. On Saturday, it was Stock the Box at Lambeau Field, and it was a collective effort on the part of the Green Bay area public schools band students who went out there under the direction of incredible women. We're one of the few districts, I would guess, that have four women as directors of our band program. The students actually last year gathered and collected 7,900 pounds of food, and this year, they, they really changed that trajectory. 16,000-plus pounds of food. And I know that our own ICSC president was out there and playing his trombone and dancing around with the mascots. And so a big shout out to him, but, but also a thank you to Associated Bank. The winner of, of the school that brings in the most resource- The winner of the school that brings in the most resource and not only cans, but also money for every dollar, we received 3.6 pounds of food, was West High School. And Associated Bank got 2,000, gave them $2,000 for their music program. And also each of our other music programs at Preble and Southwest and, who did I forget? East received $1,500 each. So it's a really generous time, but in partnership with the Green Bay Packers. And again, incredible students who were really engaged and are incredible leaders of our music programs here in the district. So that was, that was a huge success for all around, to be able to feed America with the amount of food. And one of the things that, in the conversation that went on is that I know that Tim Flood and Lori Blakesley were tirelessly behind the scenes on this and there is an opportunity that much of the food that was collected could possibly come right back into our school pantries and really start to support our real local community for that. So it's a real win. Another thing I wanted to share with you and the community, I received a letter from Carolyn Stamford Taylor, the state superintendent, and she sent the letter and she said, "I'm pleased to let you know that John Yankee, a member of your school community, is one of 20 members selected to serve on the state superintendent PAC Parent Advisory Council for this coming year. And for those who know John, you can reach out. His goal is to foster communication, engagement of our families and our community, help schools to close achievement gaps here in Wisconsin, share important information on positive programming and resources to increase student achievement and provide parents with a voice to the Department of Public Instruction." So again, I know that John had extended his contact information, but we can get that out with this notice because I think it's really important that families and parents recognize they have a voice. So there are many other things on the docket to celebrate, but I know there's people waiting. So again, please follow us along on our Facebook page. We continue to celebrate many of the wonderful things that our students and our staff are engaged in. So thank you for that. The next item, I think Brenda, is a discussion, public comment and action item. And the first item that's listed is the student dress policy.
So before we begin our discussion, I'd entertain a motion under the dress policy. Anyone wants to make the motion? Okay.
My question is because there's no recommendation coming from the administration, I'm not sure how we would do that.
Okay. Well, usually we make a motion and then we talk about it and make amendments if we need to make amendments. But I don't know that we're, are we required? We don't have to make the motion before we take, make conversation, Melissa? No, okay. All right. So if board wants to start with comments, I know we had input from parents, our SROs, some of our principals and many, many teachers. So I think everybody who took the time to fill out, fill out the survey. And Noah was prophetic in terms of what was going to happen. And we did get opinions, any opinion you would think might be out there is out there. So, which is, I think, why we are looking at this dress code policy that has four suggestions. The administrative, administration has not made a specific recommendation for hats and hoods, but the rest of the dress code is what's been proposed by the administration. So I think our, we certainly can talk about any other part of the dress code, but our most challenging conversation and decision-making will be around the hats and hoods. So at this point, I'll just open it up to any comments people have or questions. I'll start. One of the suggestions from the principals, from the administrators was to leave it up to schools and let the schools determine what, how they want to manage hats and hoods. I know we have some variability right now. We've had schools that have had permission to allow hats and hoods in their schools. I know it's nice to have a policy that's the same in every school, but it seems as if we're not going to get even close to universal agreement on how to move forward with this. And is that a possibility? And if so, would there be guideposts that we would put in place? Sort of overarching guideposts, but then allow each school to determine what makes sense for their, for their building? Is that, does that create more problems than it would solve?
Okay, I'd like to come back to that suggestion, but I'd like to talk about in the bigger picture of the dress code conversation, starting with the survey results that were given back to us. Very excited that we were able to get some feedback, especially because I think it's going to start at conversation that's very necessary and timely. A lot of the, a lot of the comments that came back, a lot of the direction came back to no, nothing, no changes, no hats, no hoodies, nothing, no head coverings. But again, much like Speaker spoke about tonight, it is, I'm struggling with, and I would love some clarification on the head, covering your head. I mean, is it, is it a specific product we have an issue with? Is it the person wearing it? Because if you think about it, and I'm trying to think about this in the most objective, common sense way possible, because it's, it's one of the only things that we talk about that seems to somehow just throw a wrench in the conversation. And so I'm trying to think about, what is it exactly? Because if you are having people come into schools and you have, and just for the record, I personally could care less what you wear, as long as you feel good in school, you want to be there as much as possible. However, we can make that happen, I'm all about that. So just any example that I give out there, I'm using just as an example. So you have students that come in and they are, their head is wrapped, you know, they're able to do this because of religious privilege, essentially. So, but at the same time, we are, we have a lot of conversation with regards to safety and fear around something a bit, because if you, if you really think about it, and I'm going to say it wrong, so someone please correct me, is it hijab? Okay, I didn't say it wrong. So it really is very, if anyone's seen it, I'm sure most people have. It does really cover quite a bit of your face. I mean, it's, that's the whole point, from what I understand. I'm not afraid of that. I actually think it's beautiful. When I think about a hood or a hat, I'm trying to picture, you know, it's thicker material. Sometimes the hat could be thicker material, can be longer, shorter, depending on length. But at the end of the day, a student is getting up in the morning and putting that on for a reason. It was stated, another speaker mentioned as well, that there's really no reason to have that in the classroom. And I think we heard tonight by another speaker, one very good reason for why a student needs to have that. I believe that if we are allowing for religious purposes, then we have to be careful because at the same time, we're actually not allowing for cultural preferences. Cultural, you know, there's just something, a person comes from their culture, celebrates something like that. They feel good with a hat on, it's a sense of pride. And again, going back to how somebody feels when they're in school, it's really important, it's really important that they feel, feel better. Back to the, I'm going to jump around because there's, I have a lot of thoughts and I'm trying to keep this as succinct as I can, but that's probably not going to happen entirely. So just bear with me. Going into the conversations that I've had and looking at the survey results, the survey results, to me, I want to have teacher voice in everything we do. I've been talking about this since I've been on the school board. I've been fighting for it many times. This happens to be one of those situations where I'm happy to have the teacher voice, but I'm happy to have it because I think it tells a story, that there's something that we need to work on. There's a lot of conversation about fear. There's a lot of conversation about safety. I took it upon myself and called the convocation speaker, Dr. Holly, who was here in the beginning of the school year. He came and spoke to everyone and talked about, I'm not going to speak for him, I'm just going to talk about some of the things we discussed on the phone for about hour, that right now in Green Bay, Wisconsin, we do not have, as we speak, we do not have what looks like traditional student body. It's shifted and that's a fact. And we don't have, we don't have a traditional student body. We have, and thankfully, I'm celebrating that, by the way. We have a lot of students of color. We have students from different parts of the world. We have students coming in whose language isn't, English isn't their first language. We have students coming in who are also, you know, experiencing significant amounts of trauma and mental health issues. So right now, let's just take a look at our student body and let's, let's honor that, let's acknowledge what that is. And let's celebrate that. And one thing that was mentioned was, we are trying to take not, traditional ideas and put in place policies for non-traditional students. And we think it's going to be fine. And I think the large amount of dress code violations and infractions and referrals and all the, all the, all the, all the, right? That's because, that's the reason that's happening. And it takes it away from even just saying it's about respect. I think it's really, we're trying to fit square pegs into a round hole and it's not making students want to be in school, it's not making them want to engage anymore. So that's just like the, the personal piece of that. Then I go back to the safety and the fear conversation that really, I didn't, we didn't seem to have any sort of data that came with that. So then I started looking into that and it's really hard to find that without starting to profile students. And I'm never doing that. So thinking about that part of it, that was, that was a lot of the conversation. There was some conversation about having it be a little bit, you know, for special days or maybe for, in the common areas, right, that students could actually wear hats and hoodies in the common areas. But if the argument to not have them entirely is safety, fear, respect, that that is, and still, there's no evidence to show that that's actually what, what, what happens with that. If that's what that is, then why would we have days where we could pay $5 to wear a hat? Or you rate, to raise money for something, or you have a fun day where you can come in? Which actually, I didn't even, I didn't think about that. A principal said to me, "This doesn't make sense. We actually have students come in and wear hats for fun days." So it's, it's a celebrated thing, but now we're saying it's actually unsafe. So there's a lot of, you know, and this is, this is public education. We, we talk a lot about using data for so many things, but in this instance, I'm really not, first of all, I'm not convinced that wearing a hat makes someone unsafe. I would love that information. If someone has it, I would love to, I would love to have that and you should send that to me. You could send that to me right now. I would love to see that because I don't believe it exists. And if it exists, it's, it's probably in a context that I think we should probably ignore. So going into more of the aspects of what to do, because we have a student body, we have students who came forward with these suggestions, which was great, by the way, because they're actually starting to advocate for their, their learning environment. They recognize some things that need changes. So I do believe we need to honor that, right? Because all this time we have spent on this, then we were able to get feedback from, from some staff. And it wasn't, to me, it wasn't overwhelmingly no, because there were people that didn't care either way and there were people who were in there that didn't care if it was in a common area. So that says to me that, a couple of things, and this is something Dr. Holly talked about and I think, and I absolutely agree with this, that if we don't provide evidence to, to state that we are not, we are choosing not to be interested in honoring our non-traditional students, then we have work to do in a few categories. We have work to do to understand why. How many people have ever asked them, "Why do you have a hat on today? What is it? Why do you feel better with that? What is it that makes you put that on? Do we care?" That's a question we should ask ourselves. Do we even care why? I care a lot, why? I know for a fact that there are students, it's a cultural sense of pride. There are some students, they feel better in class for whatever's going on in their lives. That is their ticket into the classroom. Sometimes that's the reason they're in the classroom and not home or with their friends out of park. It's this, it's a security piece. I care about that. And again, if, if something like that makes someone unsafe, I am more than open to seeing that information brought forward because I just don't have it and I just can't find it. So that part of it, I think, is important to note. But what we have here is a policy that needs to be, I believe, does need to be changed. But I also believe we have, we have work to do in regards to accepting our non-traditional student body, the youth culture that has come along with it, as well as being able to partner with them. Because this is what, it's been really interesting. We had a discussion about class size, which if you ask me, if the average person was in a room by themselves and they said, you know, if I asked what class size or somebody with a hat, which one do you really want to address? Pretty sure they're going to go with class size. But we had so much more about this topic, so then I have to think, why is that? What is it? It's, I think it's the low-hanging fruit that people can control. So I wonder about somehow compromising this, the feedback, the suggestions, the reality. I'm sorry that people feel unsafe when there are students and they're, and they don't feel that their students are engaged. But I would argue, I take that hat off, that student's not, there's not, there's not a light going on in there. If anything, they might feel worse, which would result in less engagement. I would argue that. I would, I would take that, I would take that for, that would be a debatable thing for me. So I would wonder about that. Is there something we can do where we have some sort of compromise? I think having the students in the buildings and having the autonomy for the buildings, I think what that does, and just to be quite honest with you, you're still going to get kids getting dress coded. You're still going to have kids that are non-traditional students who are coming into our district who, who feel not valued, who aren't considered. You're still going to get that. So, so my whole point today is to sit here and talk about what this may do for the environment in the classroom, which we know can be very stressful anyway, today. If everything was hunky-dory and fine, If everything was hunky-dory and fine, and we weren't having issues, that'd be another conversation. But everybody sitting in thi- this room knows that's not the case, so I would wonder if we could do something where there's, there's a way to bridge this gap, to partner with our, you know, our youth culture, which is what, what we're fighting against right now. I mean, cause if you, if you think about it, you go to college and you can wear everything we're telling kids they can't wear, they can wear in most, most universities. So, even that argument's tired. Um, but I think it's important that we find a way as a board to, to to marry this somehow, to move forward. Because there are, and, and I'm also hoping that we, we can start having some conversations. I mean, I looked at the, you know, the, the, the equity plan, I'm not sure entirely what that all includes, but there needs to be some conversations. I believe by continuing to do this, I'm more concerned personally, as an individual board member, that we are criminalizing our students, especially our students of color. When we have, um, high hopes of attracting and retaining diverse, uh, staff working in our district, this is not a good way to start doing that. Um, I think we're, we're asking for a lot of things, and we're not thinking about the unattended consequences that actually affect the students themselves. So if anything, I would be interested to hear what people think about not just completely going through and hats and hoodies, but is there a way we could do something where we bridge a bit of this gap? We move forward with a little compromise, we think about, um, you know, we honor both sides, I guess, of it. But then we also have a very honest and important and critical conversation with our staff about safety, and that they feel unsafe, because to me, we all know that hats, a hat in itself is not unsafe. It's just not. Because then a hijab would be. And I just don't believe we should be having that conversation, because what do these, what do the students who are wearing the hijabs think about that? Cause their, their classmates are talking, they're gonna go back and they're gonna talk about that, they're gonna say, um, you know, I can't wrap, wrap my head like you, it makes pe- people fans, feel unsafe. What is that's, what's that message sending to those students who are bringing rich cultural change into our district? So I'm hoping we can have some conversation about possibilities that could, again, bridge a gap.
And that was, what I was looking at was the, the, uh, when I said the guardrails, it's kinda what I was looking for, was something that didn't completely give schools, um, complete autonomy, but sort of moved them along, um, but not, but, but some schools are, have already moved along and others have more, have more room to grow in that area. So I agree with, with you on that. Eric?
Thanks Brenda, I, I think I agree with everything that you said, but there is a lot there, so I'll have to go back and check the tape. Um, but I agree with most of what you said, um, you know, I was a student who, who wore a hat most of the time in college. Uh, my why was because I generally roll out of bed five minutes before class started. Um, but, uh, i- if we would've had a vote on this topic last week, I think just personally, I would've said, yeah, for many of the reasons that you listed, I think it's okay. Uh, but the, the teacher feedback to me, um, was pretty clear, a- and, um, you know, there, there are people who I know personally and respect that work in this district, who said, that's, it's not, not really a big deal. And I, I allow it in my classroom now, and there are others who reached out and said, absolutely not, a- and cited a variety of different reasons, some, um, I disagreed with, but to me, I think what you said is the why and the education. Um, to, to have that conversation around, um, why might some students be wearing a hat? Uh, what about the, the safety concern? Because I've heard conflicting reports. Some people say, no, it's not a safety issue, and other people have said, yeah, it is a safety issue, so which one is it? So, uh, I think there's more work that needs to be done into the why. Personally, um, I can't vote for a, a dress code policy tonight that takes a hard stance, one way or the other. Um, I, I, my preference would be to allow it to be vague and inconsistent, and some of the schools in our district that currently allow hats, let them keep going. Um, and then develop some kind of a hu- you know, what kind of conversation can we have? Can we put some guardrails? The reality is, is that, uh, there are some students, um, and, and think, things that I've heard from some principals, it's a win to get that kid into school. And, uh, to fight that kid over a hat, um, is counterintuitive to just having that kid receive any kind of an education. So, uh, to me personally, i- if we're gonna take a stance that paints this black or white one way or the other, I, I'm not gonna support that on that particular issue. I agree with all of the other changes in the policy. Um, I'd love to see something right now that a- at least puts those guardrails in place, like Brenda said. Um, to, to kinda keep the conversation moving along, and, and I know we're, we're not, don't wanna do more committees and, and things of that nature, but, um, that's, that's where I stand on the issue right now.
Um, just so we don't get, um, so I, I think there is probably gonna be a lot more debate about hats, which I'll get to, but I don't, before we do that, I don't want the focus to be lost on some substantial, important changes that I think are happening with the dress code here, and we're doing, um, a lot here to codify some things and prohibit some practices, the, uh, you know, schools will no longer be able to talk to female students about skirts based on fingertip length, which makes no sense at all, because that's, uh, depending on the length of your arms, it changes things substantially. Um, that will be gone after this. Um, students, um, you know, I think this, this strange thing about, um, about straps and how somehow this misconception that the shoulder is a private body part, that's gone, uh, in this dress code. Um, those, those are all, uh, those are all really important things, and we are, we will have students in those small minority of situations where the dress code was, um, a s- student may have been singled out for a dress code in that, that small number of situations, that won't happen um, anymore under, under this, over things that are um, ridiculous, like amount of the shoulder that's, that's covered. We have a reasonable, um, well-thought-out plan here that talks about all private areas being covered, um, a policy that says that the, um, fabric that covers, uh, front, front, back and sides, it talks about reasonable variations by a building principle, for example, related to swimming, theatrical productions, et cetera. So just to get that at the forefront, I'm going to, um, make an initial motion here that, um, the Board of Education pass policy four forty-three point one as modified, um, all parts except, uh, three B. Three B is the headwear part with its various options. I'd like to pass that and then make sure we don't lose sight of that in the debate about the hats.
Is there a second? I need a second first. Go ahead Brenda.
Okay, so what does that do in the context of hats, hoods, headbands, right, today?
Nothing, it just gets the, it just gets all these other important areas passed first, and then I'm not planning to leave here without a vote on hats of some kind, but if we can't agree on one, if we're stuck and can't find a majority to pass any option, at least we've taken care of all this other stuff.
We can vote twice, yes. I'm, I have two people that would like to speak, and just on the outside chance that they're speaking to what we are, have on the table, I'm gonna call, call you up. Um, first is Audra Gab- Gabrielson.
Hi, I'm Audra Gabrielson. I live at eight seventy-five Hubbard Street, um, Green Bay. I'm here to talk about the dress code, and I came earlier to talk about the straps and the skirts, and how I found that unfair. And I did take notes on what was just talked about, and, um, personally, I think that the hats aren't as big of a problem as in the classroom. I've seen kids wearing hats in the hallways, and I have friends who feel more comfortable wearing hats. And it's a self-security thing. It's not, it's not like they're trying to just be defiant. They feel safer and more comfortable wearing hats or hoods in school. For me, um, sometimes I like to wear my hood on hoodies, because I sometimes feel a lot of anxiety, and it feels more comforting, and it makes me actually focus more sometimes on the task that I am, the task that's at hand. A lot of the time for me and my friends, that's what that means. And I feel like that's really, really important, but also, I do understand the debates about how it could be disrespectful, or the safety concerns. I don't about the hoods with the safety, but with the, I mean, the hats. The hoods I understand. Um, I understand that it can block the sides of your vision, but I feel like that's a different kind of topic, well, subtopic. But with the hats, like I'm wearing a fedora right now, and it's, it's not really doing anything to how I would be talking about this, uh, besides using it as an example. I have a friend who consistently wears a beanie because she feels more comfortable wearing said beanie. It's a really big thing on how we feel and how we can learn. I understand that some people think that it'll be more distracting if we're wearing our hats in the classroom. However, uh, my father, actually, I was talking to him about this, and he brought up a point where, well, they could just pull the hat down and lean over. They do that anyway, without wearing a hat. I have friends who, well, not necessarily friends, I have classmates, um, who are wearing hoodies, and they'll just like lay down in the middle of class. And that doesn't affect whether or not they're wearing their hood. They just do it anyway. So I don't really see the hats as a big distraction, and, um, quite frankly, I find them more beneficial than they are hurtful. I, with the hoods, like I said, I do understand the argument against safety, however, that's another thing where some kids feel more safe wearing their hoods. And like Ms. Sitnikow talked about, how we have a very non-traditional student body, and being so diverse and extraordinary, we're all going to feel different ways about this thing. A lot of my friends and my classmates, they would love to be able to wear their hats and hoods in school. A lot of the time, the, the, like disrespect almost, that I'd see against the dress code, they don't put their hoods up because they just wanna be disrespectful. They put their hoods up because they feel more comfortable doing that. It's just more viewed as disrespectful because it's against the code. It's, like I talked about, with the clothing of the straps. Some of us meal- feel more comfortable wearing spaghetti straps, some of us don't. It, it's really similar in that sense of comfort and focus.
Thank you, Audra. And then, um, Tony Babe.
Hello, my name is Tony Babe. I am a teacher at East High School. I'm a taxpayer. I live at three thousand Neuen Lane in Green Bay. I've been in the school district since two thousand and four. I've served i- served in capacity of a classroom teacher. I've served in capacity as a building administrator. I've served in the capacity as a district office administrator. I've served as a behavior administrator in this district. The issue that we're talking about today, it's not about black or white or religion. It's not about non-traditional. I'm not exactly sure what that definition is, what that means, because I don't know if that means that if you're African-American, you're non-traditional. If it just means that if you're Somali, that you're non-traditional. I'm not exactly sure what that definition is. But what I do know is that when you walk into a classroom, and when teachers are charged to engage students in learning, that we have to have structures in place that allow for that. And the young man so eloquently said, if they just simply ask them to remove them, then it wouldn't be a problem. If only it were that simple, that we could simply ask them to remove them, and it would not be a problem. I've seen myself on a daily basis, too many times, teachers simply asking them to remove their headgear along with their earphones, and being told in very explicit terms that that's not going to happen. And not only does that happen, but kids walk out of the classroom, and kids sit in the classroom and they put their heads down. And they don't engage in the learning. And if we say that we are here to have kids be college, community, and whatever the other thing is, ready. Career-ready, then we should be doing that. We should be preparing them to go to a job in, job interview, where they aren't going to be able to wear their headgear. We should be able to encourage them to be able to sit in a classroom and be ready to be what it's gonna look like when they go to work. We're not teaching them that. It's disruptive. I had a young man in my classroom today. The bell rang at the end of the day, he never heard it ring, cause his head was down and his hoodie was on. I had a young lady today walk out of my classroom and tell me she wasn't giving me her phone. She'd rather leave than engage in the classroom. And no, that's not an example of what I do and who I am as a teacher. It's, it is an example that I allow her to leave, because I'm not going to engage and escalate a situation. Our teachers are in classrooms that are full. Teacher to student ratio is at a high. Now, if we want to be successful, if we wanna concentrate on test scores, if we wanna concentrate on children engaging and equitable and excellent learning, then we need to be consistent in what it is that we do and what we expect from our students. We need to make sure that our teachers have the environment that they need in order to provide excellent engagement and instruction in our classrooms. To ask anything less is not fair to the students, to the parents, or to our school district. If we wanna be the best school district in this area, then we need to have a structure that allows us to be the best school district in this area. And it's okay if we do some things sometimes that our kids don't like, and that sometimes our parents don't like. But we have to take a stand for something. And if that's gonna be engagement, equity and excellence, then let's not argue about hats and hoodies. But let's be realistic about what hats and hoodies do do in the classroom. And unfortunately, they do cause distractions and disruptions. I'm looking at those young ladies back there, one with the beanie and the one with fedora. I like it, I'm gonna ask her where she got it when I get up from this table. But this is an appropriate place for that. In the classroom where learning is trying to happen, it's just not an appropriate place. It's not about excluding someone. It's not about filing against someone's civil rights. What is it that we really wanna do? It's not about black and white, it's about learning. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. What was her name again? Thank you. Go ahead. Thanks, Tony. Um, the policy as it stands now, what you're describing is that students are already not following the policy, and that teachers are struggling. So do you think the policy as it currently stands is working?
So, while there are still challenges with the policy, to change the policy, to allow it, to change the policy to allow it is only going to be more detrimental to the challenge that we already face. So what are, what are teachers doing? And I tell you this, you know, it's one of the things that you talked about was, you know, the non-traditional students. And I'm gonna go back to what I believe that is and what that means. We have students who come to school and they've had a bad day. They've had a bad hair day. Something didn't work for them. And I can tell you already, as an administrator, we dealt with that situation. There may be, there is that leeway already for an administrator, a teacher, to allow a student to do what's necessary if they are having some challenges when they come to school that day. I've seen it. It happens already. So we don't need to change the policy in order for that to happen. And for some of the challenges that kids come with, the young lady, I think, talked about anxiety. The young man talked about his anger issues and when he has it, that's what we have student services for, is to provide those services for a student so that they can come back and engage in the classroom and engage in the learning that's gonna be happening in the classroom. Therefore, the other students who are there in the classroom can engage in the learning. And it doesn't set an example to students who might not be able to understand that some students are having some challenges to think that this is the example for what I can do, right? Because kids do what they see other kids do. And so, if that answers your question, um, that is where the problem comes in. If we change the policy and now say that it's okay.
As the policy currently stands, do we give explicit flexibility to building leadership to break policy? So if, my question is, is if, and I'm not saying, I, I'm not saying there's anything, I don't care. I'm not saying you're wrong, but if, if, if building leadership as the policy stands, work with children to address the issues that you're talking about, are they, uh, breaking policy as it currently stands? Yes? Okay, so how would you then feel if we gave building leadership the flexibility to make that decision with their team? Because then that would give you the space to not be breaking board policy, but to do exactly like what you're saying.
You're asking me a question that I don't think is right for me to answer alone without having the input of my counterparts. Um, I've not seen all of the replies that you've gotten and I'm sure some of them probably did address something like that. So I will just stick with what I believe is happening, what I know is happening and is that, that leeway exists already and is exercised already with the current policy.
Do you believe that leeway is critical to the success of the learning of your students? As an individual person, not for your whole team, as an individual, as a taxpayer?
I believe that it is critical for us to be considerate of students and the challenges that they have, that they bring in the classroom and that we use the appropriate services that we have available to us in order to address the students when they meet. Actually, Andrew, and then you.
So, I'm, how does the, um, the, the hood, you said the student wasn't aware that the bell rang. So how, how would the, how does that, like, how would that prevent a student from knowing the bell rang?
You would think that the student would be able to hear the bell ring even with the hoodie on. But the problem is the student comes in every day and the first thing that the student does is put his hoodie on and it's on over his head. And I walk past the student multiple times during the class and try to indiscreetly wake him and ask him to raise his head and engage in the classroom. By the end of the class hour, when I'm paying attention to the other twenty-nine students that I have in my class, that student has fallen asleep and didn't hear the bell ring.
Okay, so it's, it's sleeping in class and being more difficult to catch that?
It's the fact that the student can wear the hoodie and disengage in what's happening in the classroom.
Okay. Where to start? Probably with just that. Um, so I guess, are we to believe that the student then would be engaging if the student didn't have a hoodie?
So there's not a definite yes to that. If the fact and the expectation is that the student is alert in class without the cover of a hoodie or a hat on their head that would allow them to engage, then there's a chance, yes, that the student would be more engaging in the classroom.
Okay, so there was a mention of having some sort of flexibility for students who are having some issues or feeling a certain way as they're in school, um, because let's face it, most kids don't wake up and they wanna go to school. That's just not reality. So let's just say that that's happening. But we can also say, and we all know at the same time, that students don't necessarily always feel comfortable going to student services. I would say there's a significant amount of students who don't feel comfortable doing that for all kinds of reasons. So I'm personally not willing to hang my hat on, on the student services exemption to wear, to wear something on their head. Um, I would wonder if anybody's ever talked to the student who's sleeping in class in general, um, and honestly, through the whole conversation, that's all I keep thinking about is, why is the student sleeping in class? What's going on in their life? What, what is? It's, it's, it's more than likely not because they don't like the person. It's, we know all the things that could be happening. So it's hard for me to swallow the idea that, and, and I, I have, the idea is they have to be ready for these, these careers and, um, I have a family member who works at Epic in Madison, okay? It's, uh, that's the name of the company and that's, that's their reach. It is insane, right? And they, the dress code is pretty lax there, um, because they wanna, they want to create feelings. Um, I work in video and photo work and when I have someone come on set and I have to get them dressed, they'll bring five options and they're going to be in a commercial that a lot of people are going to see, right? And when I ask them, they'll say, well, what are you thinking? I'm like, well, what do you feel good in? Because if, if you're wearing something that makes you feel better, you're going to look better on camera. This product's gonna get sold, all of it. There is a direct connection and I think that we're talking a lot about control. I believe we're talking a lot about disrespect and something being detrimental. I, I don't under, I guess I just don't understand the dis, dis, disruption because I would stick a lot to say that the students who feel disengaged, feel disengaged for all kinds of reasons. Maybe they're able to close their eyes and you can't see them, but I would bet a lot of money, they don't, they're, they would be disengaged in general. So is it that they, they look, the prop of them, the physical appearance of them looks like they're engaged because they don't have their head covered? Um, I guess that's what I, I wonder about how that, you know, when we talk about equity, it's, it, it is important that students feel comfortable because equity is from what I understand is what do you need to get to be where you need to be? That's, is that, that's the definition for me of what equity is. So it's what do you need to get to where you need to be? Equity isn't about, I'm gonna tell you what you need to get to be where you need to be. Because I feel equity is absolutely the other. So I don't really understand that.
Thank you. I also worked in our equity department here at the district. So when we talk about equity, you're absolutely right. Equity is about everybody getting what they need in order to be successful. And everybody doesn't need the same thing. We are asking our teachers to do a job here. And most of them don't see it as a job. They see it as a love. It's something that they do. They want to engage kids. They want to make sure that kids are learning in their classroom. The reality of the fact is that if a kid comes into the classroom and they are allowed to put their hoodies on and put their heads down, not because the teacher allows them to, but because the teacher consistently is asking them to remove them and engage in classrooms. When they refuse to answer questions, when they refuse to engage in the learning that's happening in the classroom, it is a disruption to the classroom. There is no if and or but about it. Again, I say we have services that are available to assist students with the challenges, with the anxieties, with the feeling comfortable. I know exactly what you, what you mean. I need to feel comfortable in what I'm in so that I can engage here. The classroom is not the place for that. Student services or other services that we have available is the place to get them to a place to where they feel comfortable in the, in the classroom to learn. But the teacher needs to be able to have the attention of those kids without having to fight constantly in a fifty-two minute class, if you're not at East High School, to engage a kid in classroom and in the instruction.
Um, we sought feedback from teachers. We got pages of it. Um, I'm just gonna read one. This one is a pretty typical, uh, pretty typical comment. Normally I support freedom of expression through clothing. However, in many school environments, it's important to be able to quickly identify an individual, um, either in person or via surveillance cameras, and it goes on from there. Um, you know, th, th, these are real concerns from teachers. And the number that I just can't get past is one thousand two hundred and sixty staff members are in favor, are, are, um, don't want to, uh, change with regard to hats and hoodies. That's a huge number. And I just, you know, if we've sought their input and we've gotten it now, we should probably listen to it. Um, they're the people that are closest to the students. Um, and I, I support the whole idea of, um, the policy being gender neutral. That's very, very important. And I feel like we have some consensus on that. But, um, today I think we, um, we, that when it comes to hats and hoodies, are not able to take the vote on that yet. Um, but that number of-
Hey now Laura, does anybody have any more questions for Tony? Otherwise, we'll, uh,
No, I, I, I'm sorry. I don't have any more questions for you, but thank you.
Thank you very much, Tony.
Thank you all.
All right. Did you have another point, Laura? You wanted to? You sounded like you were gonna say something else. Sorry I interrupted. I can come back to you.
We should disregard all this, um, very valuable feedback that we got from, uh, staff.
Christina?
I'll make it quick. This is a long conversation. I appreciate everybody's commentary and I'm actually interested to hear what the two students at the table are thinking. So I'm gonna throw it over to you when I'm done. Um, I have three things that I have been thinking about as I've been listening to all of this. Three questions. First question is what makes us safe? Second question, what makes a great learning environment? And the, the third question is what, uh, what is a equitable culturally responsive approach to supporting the whole child? And I would bet if I asked you those three questions, you would not think hats and hoodies and bandanas as your top three answers. So I, I feel as though we've sort of pigeonholed our way into, um, this conversation, um, going back to Andrew's point and points we've made, uh, rather than seeing the whole perspective of what the ant, the, the comprehensive answers to these questions are, uh, and the great work that we've made with, um, the other adjustments in the policy. You know, policy often informs practice, right? It tells us what we do and, and what we, what, what is required every day. Uh, but also practice informs policy and the, the, the path, the way that those two things work together aren't always parallel. It's not always this beautiful, perfect, uh, path forward together. And I think we see that here with the dress code. It is incredibly complex. Like Brenda said, if you ask one person, every one of you would give a different answer, right? You would, you would say what's appropriate or what's not, and it would be all over the place. So for us to think that we're going to build consensus around this issue, um, I realize now is maybe naive. Um, and, and maybe I thought we would and we haven't. Um, so I guess for me, uh, where I stand on this issue is to go back to where, where, where do we go? Um, I, I, I love the policy where it stands, um, and the changes we've made in terms of the hats and, and hoodies and bandanas. I feel like I should have that on my T-shirt here, like, keep repeating that. Um, I, I do think that, um, we know what's already happening. Uh, we know that the policy, people are, are going against board policy already. Um, and, um, I think that I'd like to see the flexibility at the building, for the building leadership, have that conversation with their staff to determine what's best for your students. Um, I believe in the autonomy and the professionalism of education and educators. Um, and what I'd like to do is think about after this policy, how that policy informs practice, meaning, do we do an equity audit, right? Do we have to do a deeper dive in our professional conversations? Our community conversations around this, because the policy will not end the conversation today. It will only enhance it. And I want to tell every one of you who has come forward to be a part of this, whether I disagree with you or not, it makes my heart want to explode to look and see all of you sitting here, whether you're here for Jefferson or the dress code policy, because like, this is what democracy looks like. Like, y'all are doing the work. And the conversation and the, the survey and the Facebook posts and the text messages and all of that, like, I love it. Like, bring it. And that's the only way we're gonna solve these most pressing issues. Like, our students are facing issues. Our staff are facing issues. And when you come forward and are part of this conversation, whether we agree or not, that's the only path forward. So I just want to tell you that, 'cause like, I want to take a picture of you guys and like, because sitting up here, seriously, it can feel lonely up here sometimes, like, on these, but you guys are here and you're participating and I think that's really important. So I just want to say thank you and I'm gonna wrap it up. But seriously, I'm fired up. Like, this is a good conversation and this community is ready for it. I've heard a lot of people say, you know, three, four years ago, you start talking about dress code policy and people really like suppress it. It gets really uncomfortable. And I feel like we're in a different place now. I feel like we're having some courageous conversations. Um, and it's, and that's important. So I'll stop there.
Motion is on the, everything but hats right now.
Correct. And Rhonda has a-
Um, so I still have a very large glaring concern. Um, and it's not an opinion. It's a fact that we are dress code, we are dress coding, we are disciplining, we are sending referrals. We, we are, kids are missing instruction time because of, of this. So that's a fact. Um, that doesn't sit well with me. It's happening now when we have a policy where, where you're not supposed to have hats and hoodies. It's already happening now. I don't know what we do about that because, yes, we give autonomy to the buildings and, okay, but we, we know no matter what, there's still going to be students who will be dress coded and, and sent out of class and maybe eventually suspended or sent to, you know, an in-school suspension room or something where they're missing instruction time. What are we going to do about that?
Can we actually, um, uh, Andrew, um, made a point that what's on the table right now is outside of heads, hi, hats and hoods. And so I'm wondering if we just vote on that and then continue the hood and hat conversation, 'cause we're gonna have to decide what to do, um, about that tonight also.
Does that mean that we vote and I can come back?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll start with you the next.
So the vote is, um, everything except what's highlighted in the policy. The, um, the proposed policy.
So all, all of the proposed changes with the exception of, of three B.
So actually, to go back to Rhonda's point though, there is, in the purpose statement, where it says students shall now be unnecessarily disciplined for their choice of attire, jewelry, or personal items that goes to your concern, is that language not strong enough for you? Because that gets to your point of punitive, um, measures and discipline based on dress policy infractions. Is that, is that, are you in support of that language or is that not strong enough?
Um, I don't know how much teeth it has. Because we already have, we already have students who are violating policy to wear things that I think we probably got them together and asked them why, 'cause they felt better to be in school with that. And that was their, that was it, right? That's why they're there with that. Um, they weren't there to plant bombs and shoot people, but they were there to- Um, they weren't there to plant bombs and shoot people, but they were there to feel better in school. So that's already happening. So what I can, I'm concerned about, what's already also happening is the, the discipline, the unnecessary discipline. So I'm, I don't know.
It, it does say-
But this isn't, this- But this is about the other piece of it, right?
And this is not in our current policy, this statement. So this is in addition-
It's in the, it's in the one we're voting on.
Correct. But it wasn't, but, but to your point that we're already have this, this, that particular sentence is currently not in our policy. So that, that sentence would, um, if we did nothing else, that sentence would ask, um, for, not, would, would require that we not unnecessarily discipline students for their choice of dress.
But, yeah, but there's prob-
So, sorry, didn't mean to cut you off. Um, in section four D, thank you Melissa, you're like giving me the thing, the hand thing over here, like, pay attention. Um, it does say, "Students shall not be disciplined or removed from classes consequence for wearing clothing, jewelry, or personal items." Um, and it says, um, "Those that are found to be so forth, um, will be placed under that section." That's a new section.
Where are you, Christina? Sorry.
Uh, section four enforcement notice and sanctions, page three, section four D.
D, okay, thanks.
Uh-huh, sorry. One, two, and then, yeah, yeah. So to me, that gets to your concern, 'cause I agree with you a hundred percent. That language gets to that issue.
But, can I come back to you?
But, if I'm a student who knows I can be told to take my hat off and there's no consequence, then, right?
What's the point?
What's the point? Right? Just, that's how I'm seeing it. I don't, I mean, again, that's, it's not about- So, and we can, oh, well, you know, but the reality is, we have students who are being, they're missing class, they're being dress coded, they're being referred because of this. It happens, um. So I don't know why that's in there. Because if we're going to, you can't be disciplined, what, what would happen then, I guess? Like, what would that look like? What would that look like if somebody fell asleep at the, at the table with their, or the desk with their hoodie on?
I think part of it is that the, it's not always disciplining the student. It's seeking additional services for the student who might be overreacting to being told either put their hood down or take their hat off, or for whatever reason, the teacher identifies the need for that student to have additional help. I'm not seeing that as discipline. If we, and number one, under D, eliminates the, the removal from the classroom just for not complying. The student may be able to leave the classroom briefly to change clothes or do whatever it takes. I really think we need to look at the big picture of this whole event. We've got a lot of feedback that we sought from teachers, staff, administrators, parents, a lot of people who have concerns about the hat. Now, we either, and yet there was a compelling tales about how, you know, under certain circumstances, teachers who know they're not supposed to be wearing hats, allow them to wear hats or hoods because of compelling reasons. So we either have to have a policy that says, no, you shouldn't, you can't wear hats, but we'll allow it under these circumstances, or a policy that says, you may wear hats, but there may be circumstances that at the local level, the local control in the schools, a teacher may not want, for whatever reasons, and they have to be stated clear reasons, why they don't want you to wear a hat. 'Cause that's the real world. You can go to some jobs and you can wear your hat, you can, you know, wear sweats, you can do a lot of things. You go to another job, you're gonna be told the, the kinds of things that you're allowed to wear. That's the real world. And I would ask the students, could you live with a policy that allows, you know, hats maybe most of the time in some schools and, and not so much in other schools? Can you live with that and adjust?
Personally, I feel like if we made it a school's choice, nothing would change, because, I mean, it kind of already is. Um, uh, for example, Southwest, we're allowed hats and hoods in common areas, and if we made it school's choice, nothing would change. And Washington allows hoods. Again, I don't think anything would change. And so, to make it a school's choice, I find kind, rather pointless, um, regarding to the change we want to make.
No, can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
If we made it more flexible, do you think more schools, though, would choose to allow it? Because, do you, do you think that maybe some schools aren't doing it because they would be going against policy? So therefore, if we made it more flexible, more schools may choose that as an option?
Maybe, but also, if you look at the administrative surveys, only twenty-five percent, I believe, said in common areas, none said in classrooms, seventy-five percent said in, and none at all. And then, if you take the four big high schools, I know J-Daw and everything, but, um, there's four of them, and one of them allows it, so that's twenty-five percent, so that kinda fits.
Go ahead.
Thanks, and I don't know who's ready to speak too. As, as you think about this, just curious, um, both Luke and Noah, if, if you're in a school, one of the things that Katie talked about, Ms. Maloney talked about, I think, and others as well, is that, um, there's place and space where things are okay to wear and, and not, and I often think about that. Do you think students would be able to be in a school where there are certain places and spaces that they at least could, at this point in time, where the hoods of teachers in a classroom say, "Yeah, that's okay in my house," versus just, or does it have to be the same through the whole school? You know, are hats not allowed, or can I wear them in Mrs. Langefeld's class, and, you know what I'm saying? You think students could adjust?
I think that the cell phone policy is a really good example of that, 'cause some teachers right now say, during work time, you can have your cell phones out, and others say absolutely not, under no circumstance, will you be able to, ha- allowed to have your cell phones out, and that's covered at expectations in the, at the beginning of the year. And students get used to those teacher expectations, so yeah, I do think that they could get used to the hat.
Okay, so we still have a motion on the table, does not include hats and hoods. Is there any other comments about the, about the dress code policy? Yours is gonna be about hats and hoods? Oh, okay, all right. So, um, all right, so we're ready to vote on the motion on the table? Okay, go ahead, Sandy.
Becker?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Vandenhove?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
All right, so we have almost a dress code policy. Um, we do have somebody else who would like to speak, so I'm gonna call them up at this point. Um, it's regarding hats and hoods. Chayton Mundell? Is it, no, it's Chayton. Yes. You, your printing is very clear, so I'm confident.
I need to skew off caps just so we know.
Would I not get it? Yeah. Do what you have to.
Uh, my name is Chayton Mundell. I live at sixteen forty-five Rainbow Drive in Oshkosh. I'm a student from UWO, and I've been listening to this school board meeting, and I thought it was really interesting that you guys are having the debate about hats and hoods. Um, I went to high school predominantly in Ripon. It's a smaller community, smaller school graduating class of like a hundred and twenty kids. Is, it's pretty small. Uh, but we had a similar debate amongst our students and faculty. I don't know if it ever got to school board, 'cause I was a sophomore when it happened, and I just wasn't invested. Um, one thing that I think is key to remember is expression for students is really important. You don't want them to feel kinda drummed down by school. It can be very monotonous, especially when you get to high school levels. Creativity is already kinda out the window for a lot of schools. We're doing a lot of state tests, we're doing a lot of mandated things, and assignments don't necessarily give us all that creativity flow. But fashion, how you dress, how you act, and how you approach things, that's entirely individualistic. You can do that yourself, and I know a hat is a small thing and can be distracting, but I think if the student's already disengaged because of the hat, they're disengaged 'cause they don't wanna be engaged in the first place. A hat is moot. Someone could be doodling their notebook or throwing notes at their friends. It doesn't matter if a hat's involved. Is it a safety concern? I, I don't know. I've never seen someone bring a gun into a school under a hat. Not to say it's not possible, but I've never seen it. I don't know how safe or unsafe hats can be in that merit. But I think it's good to acknowledge that hats and hoods are a great way for students to express themselves and to express their culture in some respects. Some students wear hats with the Mexican flag or the American flag. That's a good thing to represent. It's, it's a great way to show culture and expression for students without necessarily imposing on them too much by saying you have to remove it, 'cause now it might turn into an argument of, why do I have to remove it? Because it represents a country that we're not in. That's an argument you wanna, at least in my mind, you'd want to avoid, especially if someone's trying to represent their culture through headgear.
Thanks, Chayton. Oh, Rhonda, you have a question?
So how did that all end up?
Uh, we were allowed to wear hats.
Okay.
Um, we would still have creative-
Can you push your button again? Sorry. It goes off when she puts hers.
Gotcha. Uh, we're allowed to wear hats. On creative days, we could do hoods if they're a part of a costume. To my knowledge, we're still debating hoods. I don't know where that one ended up, but hats were allowed by the end of that school year.
You stated, I'm not sure exactly how you stated it, but you said something about, I know hats can be a distraction. How can they be a distraction?
At least in my, uh, school, kids would throw their hats at each other in the classroom when the teacher was turning around writing on the whiteboard. I don't know if that necessarily happens every classroom, and that really just comes down to the kid. Some kids just wanna goof with their friends because they don't care about what's happening in school. They know where they wanna go, whether it's the workforce or not, and whether they need a high school diploma. So I just think if kids don't wanna engage, they already won't, and a hat is just another method to perpetuate that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Andrew?
Yeah, so, and we did have a lot of, um, we did have a lot of teacher feedback, and am I gonna honor teacher voice? Yep. And am I gonna honor, uh, student voice? Yes. Um, and honoring that voice doesn't, doesn't mean that I'm going to vote the way that you want, because otherwise, that would mean we're only honoring voice if that, if that opinion is prevailing. So I just wanna point out a, a couple of things from the, the comments that are maybe, um, maybe a little bit of a darker side to this, and then I'll contrast it with some, some really thoughtful ones that were in there too, okay? So here's one. Dress codes were established for a reason. Sometimes you just have to follow the rules. As students mature, they will realize that you don't always get what you want. Not everything can or should be customized to suit individual preferences. Uh, outside of religious precepts, there is really no reason to cover your head while in a building. I, I was embarrassed to, to read that, and I'm, I'm sorry that someone feels that way who works here. And the, the, this is a small minority, okay? But this is, dress codes were established for a reason, and then turns right around and says, there isn't one, it's just to, just to make you follow a rule. Now, that's not what speakers tonight said. It's not what most people who made comments said, but that mentality is out there, is out there too. And that's, you know, that's where I get concerned that people are gonna, um, that a small minority of people are going to pick on kids over this, and that's why I'm glad that, whatever we do with hats, there are gonna be improvements in the dress code. So a lot of frivolous things that got kids kicked out of class, like skirt, skirt lengths being based on your arm length rather than whether or not it's covering the legs appropriately and that kinda stuff. I'm, I'm really glad that that's gone. Um, you know, with, with safety, um, no, no, no actual statistics or data about safety was brought forward, other than, um, anecdotally, we had, I mean, we had some SRO comments describing certain types of garments that have hiding pockets in them. Um, but there's nothing here, I, I didn't see anywhere in the proposals that the, a garment that had a hood would be banned. It was only about having the hood up, so I don't see where that affects hiding stuff. Um, I, so, I also wanna say too, though, that there were some very thoughtful comments, and I was glad to hear some of these. Like, just some really sincere, um, with my students, I like to be able to see how they're doing and be able to read non-verbal cues, and if they're having a, having trouble or something, I don't want those cues to be hidden. And so that made me feel a little better after reading one that said, we should have rules just to teach them how to follow them. So there, there were good comments in there, there too, about the, the hats. Um, I, so I categorized the comments, and there were, it adds up to more than the number, because people often mention more than one issue. And so what I saw the most of was, uh, safety, um, identification of students, which often were mentioned together, uh, something about job readiness, uh, something about respect, uh, and then student disengagement, and then some other, some other categories. So, you know, safety, I don't think there's, Noah, if, if there's evidence, actual evidence about safety, I haven't seen it yet. Um, identification, whatever we pass for hats, there is language in there that would say that faces, I, I think, I think it says faces and ears must be visible, and if it doesn't say ears, we could add ears, 'cause a lot of districts who do allow them say faces and ears visible. Um, that would, that should take away the id- identification concern. And, you know, job readiness is interesting, 'cause not only are there jobs where you can't wear hats, and jobs where you can wear hats, there's jobs where you have to wear hats. And there's, you know, I guess I, you know, I, um, you know, I, I work in, uh, I work in IT, and it's, and it's good, and I, I like it, and I, I do well, but I know that, I know people who wear a, um, must wear a, a hard hat to work and make a heck of a lot more than I do. So, I mean, what's, what's that? Um, it, I, so I think we're, I think it's a little, eh, the job readiness thing is a little, a little weird to me, and then, would you wear, you know, would you wear it to a job interview? Um, no, because someone's gonna, right, we talk about job preparation and job interviews, and, um, I'm thinking we're probably gonna say that that's, you know, there's, there's different levels of formalities for different things. In job interviews, when I worked in, uh, more closely with workforce development, we always said, dress, you know, a level, uh, dress one level or so dressier than the job you're going for. Not, you know, so that's different, right? Uh, so, I'm interested in hearing more about where, where other people are at about hats, but I just, I, I can't ignore the fact that in honoring teacher voice, it, it doesn't mean voting for what the majority opinion was of teachers, and if we are going to be doing that, um, then I guess I would welcome that approach when I have more ideas to offer about, um, you know, more class size reductions. So I bet, I bet that would be even bigger than a two-to-one ratio. So, a- and, you know, I guess I'd also say if we could do, if we could do, if we could get Mr. Gage's trade-off, I would take that too. If we could have, if we have a policy that guarantees that all students will be engaged, um, but allow hoods, I would go for that too, but I don't know how we're, I don't know how we get quite there yet, but I would love to be at that place someday.
Oh, oh, we've got, no, I'll, you go first. Oh, oh, we've got, no, I'll, you go first.
So, um, okay, I'll just, I, I have like, you know, I have that list in my, so I, I should be pretty short though, not as, not as much as last time. So to, on the old policy, the quote was principals may make exceptions as necessary. But in my experience, when people, I think of a couple of specific situations where people were having, um, essentially a bad hair day and they asked to cover their, they asked to wear a hat and they were told no, and they said, well, principals can make exceptions, and the principal said yes. This, this is not at West, by the way, so I, just so that's clear. Um, yes, we can, but I just don't feel comfortable going against board policy. So that, leaving the exception, it, it, it's there and I, it's a good thing. But principals still will try to, usually, I'm not trying to generalize, but principals will gen- I am trying to generalize. Go with, um, go with what is the policy as written when they can. Two. So I, I guess the, I, I like the idea of individual schools having their autonomy. But when, I guess I just don't see how a hat at one school is okay and then you move to another school and it's not. And I could see a lot of problems from students saying, well, wa- wait a minute, I'm not, how come this high school, this is a, suddenly a problem or some sort of concern. And then I go to this school and it's not. As for identification and safety, I, I, I did talk to a couple of people about this, monitors and such, and they said that they were not concerned about it because any, hoods are commonly worn in the hallway anyway. And, um, they, it's never been a problem as far as figuring someone out on surveillance or if, or, um, if someone covers their face, then they'll either be asked to take it off, then they'll either be asked to take it off or, uh, we have a couple of students who, like, I know one gentleman, he likes to wear, he likes to wear a mask, I don't ask, good for him. Doesn't, doesn't, he doesn't do it like, if someone's like, who are you? He'll take it off and say, you know, you know what I mean? He's not trying to do anything malicious. Um, but it's identifiable because he's the one, he's like the one kid who likes to do that. So it's, it's not that concern. I, I don't understand that concern too much. I'm not trying to say that, like, everything students want to do is what the board should do. That's not, that's not what I'm trying to say. I'm just trying to provide kind of that aspect just so you guys can consider where, why students don't really like the idea of individual schools or even better individual classrooms. Because then they really say, okay, how come my hat is such a problem in this classroom? And then I literally walk across the hallway and then this hat is suddenly not a distraction and not a problem and no longer affects my engagement. Onto engagement and then I'll be done, I promise. Enga- um, essentially, if, if, if people are going to sleep in class, I think they're going to do it. Because I did, I, I know of teachers who will say, you know, you must take your hood off and then they would, and then they would just sleep without the hood. Um, and they'll use earbuds without the hood and they'll use ear, use earbuds with long hair. And this policy would require your ears to be visible, so that wouldn't even, i- if that were enforced like that, it wouldn't even cause a problem. I think it, disengaged students, there are a lot of reasons for that. And I, I see what people are saying where hoods can make it an easier opportunity for a student who might want to become disengaged. But from what I've seen, if students want to not participate, they can usually do that irrespective of whether they're wearing some sort of head covering. They'll either say, you know, I don't, I don't want to participate in this and sleep anyway. And then when they get woken up, then same problems. Or they, I just don't see how it connects that well. If this is the, and, okay, I think I figured this out. If this is used to escalate situations often, and that's what is concerning. And I, people will, if they don't want to be there, they don't want to be there and they know this one teacher is really not okay with hoods, they'll throw up their hood and then they'll use it to get kicked out of class. Are there, are there other ways that students who don't want to be there could get kicked out? Yes. There are always some way that a student could escalate, but this, this one is usually all the, the other thing, the other ways to get removed from class, if you really don't want to be there, are a lot more troublesome than a hood. So a hood is an easy way if you're like, oh, I'm kind of on the fence, do I want to, well, I might as well just get out of here because I don't want to learn about bio or whatever today. Then they throw their hood on and then take your hood off. No. And then they escalate it and then they're gone. So this policy does address a lot of that, which I'm thankful for. But as I think having a less restrictive policy as soon as it is feasible, I think would be best for students.
Okay, I had Luke and Rhonda and Eric, sorry.
I just wanted, uh, to address a few, okay, maybe more than a few things that are reasons to be against this. Um, one, the student from Ashkosh.
Wait, wait, reasons to be against what?
Hats.
Okay.
And why, why I disagree with them. So.
So these are, these are, these are reasons people will give against hats. Okay.
Yes.
Got it.
Um, the student from, I believe it was UW Ashkosh, mentioned hat throwing. I could just as easily take off my shoe and throw it at someone or take a notebook out of my backpack. Or I could bring a ball to school and throw it at someone. And I, I gen- ge- genuinely feel like taking off, allowing students to wear hats will not escalate any throwing of things. As for job interviews, um, students not being, you're not allowed to wear a hat to a job interview, or you shouldn't. Well, you also shouldn't wear sweatpants or pajama pants or flip flops or jeans, a million other things that we are, are currently allowed to wear at school. And so I, I just think that's a very relevant reason because of that. Um, also, I think that all class, all classes are different. For example, choir, we're standing up the entire class period or most of it. And so sleeping should not be an issue because you're standing up. I mean, that'd be impressive. So I don't think having, someone having a hood up during choir would at all affect their engagement to the activity at hand, which is singing or reading music or whatever we're doing that day. Also, you bring up the, I believe it was twelve hundred eighty-one teachers who said no. I could be totally wrong with that number. Oh, so close. Twelve hundred sixty teachers, but, and that's a lot. That's a huge number and you're correct. But also, I wonder if we surveyed the students, how big that number would be. We have somewhat over twenty thousand? Um, that could be fourteen thousand. It could be ten thousand. It could, but it could be one thousand, you know, like, it, you don't know. Because right now you're seeing the opinions of me, Noah, the sixth grader from Edison. And, yes. And so I don't think that does us as a student body justice. And when you bring up the fact that it's such a big number, yes, right now, we seem like a small number, but we could be much bigger if you did survey all of us. Another thing is that I feel like there's a huge difference between hats and hoodies. Um, hoodies, yes, I can see where students became, could, can become disengaged. Uh, they can put their hoodie up, they can tighten it, so there's just a tiny little hole. I've seen it a million times. But hats, the fedora, for example, or if I'm wearing a baseball cap, I don't see any way that that could impede you from seeing my face. Maybe a little bit of shade up to here or something, but I, I don't think that. So I feel like if we're gonna disregard hoodies as a whole and not allow them, then we should maybe make a different rule for hats and hoodies. Um, regarding safety, students are allowed to wear, for identifica- identification purposes, students are allowed to wear hoodies and hats in hallways, at least at the beginning of the day, outside of school, things like that. And that's where the cameras are. So I, I don't know how that would at all. The, yeah, the cameras aren't in the classrooms. I believe they aren't allowed to be in the classrooms. And so during, and in, in the classrooms, that's where we're not allowed to wear hats. So the identification piece is really irrelevant in that sense. Um, and for community, college and career ready, like Mr. Becker said, I mean, I work at Dairy Queen. And I'm proud to work at Dairy Queen. And I have to wear a visor to work every day. And if I don't, my boss will say, why aren't you wearing a visor? And if I responded, I'm not allowed to in school, she'd give me a visor and make me put it on. And there's a million jobs and college, career and community ready is supposed to prepare you for all of the things that you might face. College, some might allow hats, some might not allow hats. Um, some people might enter the air force or air force or the army and a lot of times they are required to wear hats and on their uniforms. So, yeah, that's all.
Okay. Rhonda?
So my question is for the school board. Um, do you, well, do you have what Andy Austin, that paper that he had?
Sadie has it.
Can I? Can I grab that? So his, his commentary, I didn't, I didn't really think about as deeply.
Yeah, I think he has written more than he said, but.
Nope, he did. I'm not gonna read it, by the way. Don't worry. That's okay. I'm not reading it. But I do believe that I think, I'd like to know how, I'd like to know how everybody sitting at this board feels about what he pointed out when he talked about that there is religious preference in this school district when it comes to address code. And we're, um, we're actually using that in a dress code policy. I think that's interesting. I'd like to know, and again, I have no issues with that personally. I'm just looking at the merits of this, the arguments of this, um, and consideration of the First Amendment being, the clause being applied equally. I'm wondering about what people think about that. Because right now, it appears we are giving that preferen- preference to people for religious reasons and I'm pretty sure that's not something we intended. Just want to know how you feel.
Ken, did you want to say something? Is this related or? Okay. Um, we'll, we'll put that question on the table and let Eric speak and then come back.
So this is obviously an important discussion and we're having a lot of different opinions, but we also have a lot of other important discussions to have tonight and, uh, people who've got to get up and go to work tomorrow. So what I would suggest is if a board member has a, uh, motion that they'd like to make, let's make it. Uh, and if not, let, we, we can continue this discussion. If, if we're not ready to vote tonight on a specific motion, um, then let's have this conversation at the meeting in two weeks. Because a lot of, uh, important people sitting out in the audience who've got work to do with a lot of our kids in the district. And so I'd like to, uh, if someone has a motion, that's great, let's go for it. And if not, then let's table the discussion until the November fourth meeting. That's.
I don't know how that works with your question, but.
Yeah, I don't, um, does anyone have a motion? No.
Before I make, can I ask, um, can I ask Melissa to come up and let us know where we, where we would be at tomorrow morning if we stopped here and there was no section passed about hats? Because a lot of stuff was redli- um, red-lettered in, lined out. So where are we? If, if we don't act on the hats part?
You adopted a policy that doesn't address hats at all. So that policy is going to supersede the policy that's on the books today. So hats are not addressed at all. My concern with not addressing the hats at all is that there's no language to address religious and disability accommodations that's in language, um, section B three, that allows students to wear headwear for religious and medical reasons. And those are accommodations under, um, those various different federal and state laws. That's my first concern. My second concern is what, what are principals enforcing tomorrow with respect to headwear? Because it, it is not addressed at all in the policy you passed.
That's kind of what I thought and I, I wanted to make sure that because this is, some policy changes would have left chunks intact, but this is a pretty substantial rewrite, which is good that it's a pretty substantial rewrite. So I think we have to, um, I think we have to do, I think we have to do, I mean, at a minimum, I mean, yeah, I think, so I'll, I'll answer Rhonda's question. I think the, I think we are, I think court, courts have been clear that student religious expression and employee religious expression is, is protected and overrides whatever you would have in a policy, whether you feel that way or not. It's, it's, I think it's a, I think it's a interesting point of should we then make it available to all, if the federal government has said that you must allow it for religion, therefore should we allow it for, everybody is a valid question, but you can't not offer it for religion because that's a, a clear federal.
That's not my question.
Okay.
Can I clarify? I obviously need to. So that, that's actually not what I'm saying.
Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm talking about what Andy Austin said in the beginning. The First Amendment protects personal liberty and the expression of religious and other opinions. The Fourteenth Amendment clarifies that every person dwelling or traveling within the jurisdiction of the United States enjoys the protection of the Bill of Rights. The government cannot deny to any individual due process or equal protection under the law. Treating people differently for reasons of nationality, race, religion or sex in a harmful or unjust matter constitutes discrimination. Um, it talks about Supreme Court decisions about the estab- Establishment Clause to cover law and policy with related, with relation to school, um, including public schools. So my, my thought in what I'm asking, and I, I really would love to know how you feel. Um, because I think it's a great, it's a great thing that was posed is we're giving preference to religion in a public school, essentially. Am I wrong? Tell me how I'm wrong.
We're required to accommodate reasonably held religious beliefs under the law. And you are accommodating a person's reasonably held religious beliefs under the law as well as a disability such as, um, others had brought up, uh, cancer, propecia, that sort of thing. Um, as Mr. Gage pointed out, under the Tinker v. Des Moines test, a school district is able to regulate student speech in the school. Um, there's a famous Tinker v. Des Moines. It's a very old, uh, US Supreme Court case and there's been other cases that have interpreted Tinker v. Des Moines. Some people practice strictly, uh, First Amendment, um, law for student speech. So I, I mean, there's been many, many, many cases that have happened since Tinker v. Des Moines. And a school district is able to regulate student speech and student dress is student speech. We have to accommodate for religious and disability reasons, but we are able to regulate student dress as student speech.
So that's the literal explanation, right? I mean, that's, that is what that is. Um, I'm not looking to take away the religious option, but just so you're clear, I'm clear that people understand that. I'm not looking to do that. I'm not. But it is interesting to know that we are willing to continue with kids that can come in with their head wrapped. And because it's told that we have to do that, we are doing it. But it's still about the, the safety issue that we're not able to come to the conclusion that it's okay for other kids to do it. So is it only that we're interested in it because it's a, a court case? Like, I'm not understanding. Anything? I mean.
Go ahead.
So what I heard you say is that because of the way the statutes and law are, that's why we, we can do it. That doesn't preclude what we're talking about. So it's, it's conflated. So it's a separate question. It's a good question.
So, sorry, oh, sorry. I was gonna ask a question. Go ahead and ask your question. I was gonna ask a bigger question probably than you're gonna ask. As in trying to wrap this up.
Just go. And then I was gonna make a question. I was gonna make a comment to you.
Um, so here's where I'm thinking. Um, I am concerned that culturally we're asking our students to check too much at the door by prohibiting hats and hoods. I also can see from the survey that our schools are not ready for us to allow hats and hoods. Um, I'd like to see us get there and I know. get there. And I know, like I said, early, earlier, much earlier, that we have a couple of schools that are already working at that. So I'm gonna look at Melissa. For help in terms, so I, I don't know what kind of a, of a motion to make because what I'd like to do is and, and this really can't go into policy, but I'd like to see us look at at the expectation that over the next school year or this school year, that we will work toward being able to have people comfortable with, with hats and hoods in our schools. I think that that's good for students, but I also understand that there's a lot of concern amongst our staff. So I don't know if, I don't know, I don't know what to do with that because I'm not comfortable tomorrow allowing hats and hoods based on the, on the survey results that we have. But I am comfortable saying, let's get there. But how do you write policy with that in mind?
Thanks Brenda. I, uh, that's what I was trying to get at earlier when I was talking about the first step, allowing building leadership to have that conversation with their staff. As, as a step in that direction, also recognizing that staff from the survey have indicated that they have, we have work to do in conversations that need to be had together. Um, and again, maybe thinking about an equity audit. So that's why my suggestion was to from a policy standpoint, allow building leadership to make that decision, um, per building with then the recognition that aside from policy language, we would have a conversation around what the practice and the supports look like in the next year. Um, and with maybe the intent of revisiting this next year. So I, I don't know if that's kinda what you were thinking.
Yes, that's, that's what I'm thinking, but I wanna also be, I wanna be legal within policy language. And, uh, and I don't know if, I mean, I assume that we can put in policy for tomorrow that, that the, the hats and hoods will be at the discretion of each school. But then have the expectation, just like you, like you, uh, um, iterated about, um, or reiterated about, um, about working toward looking at redoing the policy in, in, uh, another year or whatever we, time we think. Katie?
What if we went right to two under B and indicated headwear? If, if and when permitted in a building, must allow the face to be visible and not interfere with the line of sight or, and just go on. And at that point, we're stating that if and when permitted in a building, but then we can work towards.
Wait, what are you looking at?
Um, under headwear, be headwear. You go right to, uh, go right past all those ones and put, and just go headwear if permitted, if and when permitted in a building. Must allow the face to be visible and not interfere with the line of sight to any student or staff except clothing, headgear worn for religious or medical purposes.
But then we still need something in there at the discretion.
It's just the if and when permitted in the building.
Yeah.
And the, the print, the administrators would determine what's permitted.
Go ahead, Melissa.
So I'm just wondering if you would take B in the very first one. And it would say headwear, including hats, hoodies and van- bandanas may be permitted in school buildings to the extent permitted by the building administrator. And then number two would stay the same. Headwear must allow the face to be visible and not interfere with the line of sight and, or, to any students or staff. And then, and then also include number three, students may wear headwear for religious or medical reasons.
And that's why you're the attorney. Yes.
All right. So do you have that Sandy? Okay.
Try it again. Where on B, the very first number one Sandy? Okay. Headwear, including hats, hoodies, and bandanas. Strike out the shell and write may be permitted in school buildings to the extent and then write permitted by the building administrator. And then cross off the, cross off the rest.
All right, um.
And we're leaving in two and three. Then we would leave in two and three.
Right, right. So does, does anyone wanna make that motion?
Second.
Is there a second? Okay. Uh, go ahead. You wanna say something?
Um, the building administrator alone or the building leadership team? Does it matter? Or designate? I just think, I just think that it, it's, it's a more inclusive.
Yeah, I, I get what you're saying.
I'm just saying a building leadership team. It's a group of people that represent the school. I think that. I, I, I can't define that.
And then if there's an agreement in the building, then who is the tiebreaker to make the decision?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think the administrator's gonna not, administrators aren't gonna do this, you know, laterally. They'll use their, because we said allowable, right, in the? In it, yeah.
Ultimately.
So ultimately, it's the, it's the administrator. Oh, Andrew, go ahead. And then I'm gonna call up Sarah in a minute.
So, um, a couple of things. First, first of all, and I, I guess, I, we could do this by asking unanimous consent if we don't wanna have to vote on an amendment. I think where it says face should be visible, I think, uh, face and ears is important. It still has the religious and medical exemption, but face and ears, m- most of the comments I heard about, um, in the category of hiding things was earbuds. So face and ears, other districts have that in their dress codes. And so I'd like to see if people are okay with that.
My concern with that is how, how are ears visible? I mean, they're visible this way if your hood is wide, but from the side, they're never gonna be.
Well, from the side, they're never going to be, but it's, I mean, it, it's, I'm using language I've seen in other, in other places. You have a, if you look, I'm, I'm assuming it means if you look at the student straight on, you can, the, the idea is you can't completely conceal earbuds. You'd have to grow long hair to do that, which that's still allowed. So, earbuds aren't, but long, long hair is. So. There were like fifty mentions of earbuds. So I'm trying to honor, honor that without, um, but I think you either need to ask unanimous consent Brenda, or I'll move it as an amendment.
All right, is there a unanimous consent? Is there anybody who doesn't want? Ears, okay.
I, I do have one more thing though. Does, so hoodies is, we're talking about hoodies in the headwear section. I don't think anyone, uh, I, I, I don't think anyone is talking, or I think few people are talking about trying to prohibit a hooded sweatshirt with the hood not up. But what is the definition, how, what is the definition of, of hoodie? Cause of the policy says hoodie, hats and hoodies. So do we need to cha- in other words, we need to change that to hats and hoods?
Yeah. Good point.
But it's under headwear.
Yeah, but someone, but it, the, the category title doesn't override policy language, I don't think.
I think hoods makes it very clear. Cause hoodies are.
Do we have to have the hats, hoodies, bandanas? Can't we just say headwear? Isn't that pretty inclusive? I mean, it seems like we're unnecessarily pigeonholing. I mean, there's like, the list could go on of other things you put on your head if we just say headwear inclusively. Bandanas. I mean, head wraps or it could go on. Like, just say headwear. That's it. Right? There seems to be a lot of chatter. Y'all disagreeing with me out there?
They wanna go home.
No, I, I mean that as an honest question. Like, can't we just say headwear? Yeah.
Um, so that, but there are kids who wear, I'm not even sure what it's called, but it, it wraps around their head.
Right, and I'm saying that would be.
That would be allowable.
That would be okay?
Yeah, that would all be part of headwear.
Headwear is the only term.
Totally fine.
I don't, I don't think, I think, I think, uh, durag should be a, a universally allowed. I don't, I don't think that should be subject to administration. I think that's a common term, yeah. I just see durag. Isn't, is that what it's called, I think? Is there a better word?
So head, by changing headwear and including that next phrase, we're making it actually more inclusive of what you wanna put on your head.
Okay.
Is everybody all right with that?
Well, wait, what? But, no, I don't, but I don't wanna have, I'm, I'm not okay with something that, I mean, that is, uh, there's probably certain things that I don't want administrators to have discretion over and the item commonly known as a durag is, is one of them.
Yeah, but if we say headwear, it's headwear.
That's why I don't wanna do it. I think, I think we, I think we open a, I think we open some problematic doors if we go further than hats and.
So you're saying you don't want durags?
I thought you said it should be universally allowed.
I don't want, okay, so right now, right now, an administrator, if, if we do it this way, the building administrator, um, can, am I, am I wrong? Uh, what, what can the building and, what does the building administrator not have control over with the current proposed motion? Do they, they have control over hats, hoods, bandanas?
Well, and it says headwears, including hats, hoodies, and bandanas. So it doesn't exclude headwear. It just gives you an example of the headwear that we're referring to. So I think it's, I think it's actually.
Can a principal, can, I, I, I hope, and I hope none of our principals would, but could a, could a principal tell a student to take off the article of clothing commonly referred to as a durag? Under, as, as written? Melissa?
No.
It's not a bandana, it's not a hat, and it's not a hood. I, I don't think.
I think a principal could tell a child to take anything off that causes a material and substantial disruption. So if, if a durag was causing a material and substantial disruption, it has to be a real material and substantial disruption, then whether it's a hat or green tennis shoes or a Mickey Mouse t-shirt, if it's causing a material and substantial disruption, they can ask the student to take it off. I, I know, but I, I don't, I don't see the difference between a durag versus a t-shirt versus Mickey Mouse ears versus socks. It's whether it's causing a material and substantial disruption.
Wait, but we are. But I thought what we're trying to do, what is happening in this motion is principals have some discretion over headwear, which includes take your hat off even though it's not causing a material disruption. I mean, every materially disrupting hat, whether we allow hats or not, you still can't wear a hat that's causing a material disruption, right? A swear word hat or something. That's different. So.
I, I'm, wha- what I heard from Ms. Babe and from Mr. Gage was that and from the comments in the feedback was that the hats and hoodies are causing a material and substantial disruption. That's what I heard, that's what I read and that's what I've heard. So that is the, the basis for, I think, what you are acting on. Now, do durags cause a material and substantial disruption? I don't know that. I'm, again, I'm, I'm not in the classroom. I, I don't, I'm not making that recommendation. I don't know that.
But we're not, but, but we're not. We're not passing a rule that only allows clothing to be barred if it creates a material disruption. It's allowing principals discretion to, to do, it's, it's offering a judgment call in the, in the headwear area. Which I might, I, I might be able to get behind as a, as a compromise if we have a sunset date on the, the policy, which would force us to, would force the board to review it, but I'll come back to that. But I still don't, I need, I need to know what, I need to know what principals would have discretion over tomorrow morning if we pass this and what principals would not have discretion over tomorrow morning unless it's creating a material disruption. Obviously, a, a durag or any other, any piece of clothing on any part of the body, body with a swear word on it is not what we're talking about here. That's, those are, it's always illegal.
I don't, I, I apologize. I, I don't know how to answer that because what you're asking is to enumerate every possible thing that you can wear on your head. And I, and I don't think we can do that in a policy.
No, but we enumerated hats, hats, hoods, and bandanas. Are, are what? Up to principle, those three are up to principal discretion. Or?
No, it says headwear, including hats, hoodies, and bandanas shall be permitted. It doesn't exclude any kind of headwear. It just gives three examples of headwear.
So I'm, I'm, can we just read back what the motion is?
I'm gonna read back the way the paragraph is gonna read because that was the motion. Okay. Headwear, including hats, hoods, and bandanas may be permitted in school buildings to the extent permitted by the building administrator.
We have, we have a motion and then that includes number two and number three is the motion.
Right, right.
All right, we have, um, one more person. That's actually one person that gave a written comment, which I will read. It's from Mount, or sorry, uh, Ryan Center for Mount Horeb, a student at UW Oshkosh. In the college environment, hats and hoods are allowed at UW Oshkosh, a public university. As a public school district, the interest of the public should be first. If hats are allowed in public, then schools should not be an exception. And then I also have Sarah Pampern, who would like to speak.
Hello, everyone. Sarah Pampern, twenty-three ninety-seven Yolanda Circle, Green Bay. I'm a teacher, a sixth grade teacher at Edison. Um, I'm going to make this very brief. I'm getting very frustrated because, um, I see people in, in this room right now who are here because literally a month ago, their entire situation was uprooted. And within a month, we already have a complete plan in place in order to remove them from their schools. And yet we're spending three and a half hours talking about hoods and hats. Feel like we have a lot bigger things that we need to worry about. Um, I feel like we are going around in circles right now. And there are people whose literally, their professions are on the line. And we are making those decisions so quickly. I just, it, it's not making sense to me that we can spend this long on something so small and then make such big decisions for people and families in such a short amount of time. I felt like it was important to at least point that out and that's all I have to say.
All right, thanks, Sarah.
Okay, I, I move to amend the motion by adding a, uh, sunset date of uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty. If my amendment passes, then I'll vote for this. If not, I'll vote no.
All right, there's an amendment proposed. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comment?
No.
Uh, Sandy, and we're just voting on the amendment. Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Vandenhuvel?
Aye.
All right, so the motion, um, is the same as before with the addition of a sunset date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty. And we can do that, Melissa? There's no legal problems with what we just, okay. All right, so now we have a motion on the table.
I think, I think it's proba- I think because of where we're ma- we al- we already passed the rest of the policy, so the sunset here would apply to the hat part, part.
Applies to what we're voting on currently. Yes. Um, okay, uh, any other comments? Sandy, go ahead.
Shelton?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Vandenhuvel?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Alright, carries seven zero. And next, well, I guess I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, and I, I appreciate everyone hanging here for this long period of time, because this is a critically important issue. And it has been an important issue in response to what we started a conversation many, many years ago in terms of how do we address the needs of our students overall, and, and what are the opportunities that we have that we can afford to consistently provide equity and access for um addressing the facility inequities on the west side. One of the things that, that I wanted to share with you is that as we continued this process, one of the, the pieces of information that was shared with the board, there was a significant amount of information shared with the board. And for whatever reason, I just want to clarify a couple of things, first of all. Were the board to choose Jefferson and Fort Howard um to be a combined school, I think one of the key pieces is that there is a, a commitment to um making sure that the student services and services that are provided would be combined. And it's not a formula, it is a combined effort, so for example, as, as we provided, if there's um, right now, there is at Jefferson, there is a point five uh literacy coach allocation, and at Fort Howard, a point five, so the combined would be a one point oh. That's just one example, so I just wanted to clarify that. Our purpose of this is to really make sure that the board has the resources and understanding of what opportunity is here. When we, we had the conversation um a number of months ago, we looked at the possibility in all the school enrollments across the district, particularly on the west side, and looked at, are there places and spaces where we can, we can be responsive to what our community said in the survey around consolidation and the significance of repurposing, and that's how we, that's one of the main reasons we came to this opportunity is looking at and bringing forward the possibility, and I say possibility, should the board decide to consolidate Jefferson with Fort Howard. Because collectively, the two schools um would be combined in a school the size of approximately a little less than three hundred students. I think what um we learned in the process too, and it's shared in the document, is the history of Jefferson and Fort Howard. And that story is there. What's interesting is that Jefferson used to be Jefferson School, and the students that um were brought by the board from into the school when it was repurposed, their students at Jefferson School who attended there must have been um identified as other spaces and places. And so the serving of the students, um, they literally were moved from Fort Howard to Jefferson, and then the boundaries took place. But I think that at the end of the day, the board has got to make the decision as to whether or not this is something they wish to pursue, and that's really what the whole conversation has been about, looking at what additional resources and opportunities would be afforded. One of the things we can see is that by combining um student services and media specialist, tech integrator, and administrative support, there would be more for the students. Um, I also recognized and talked with the after-school programming, and there's more additional opportunities for students would, should the stu, two schools be combined. Another thing we learned is that Oral Health Partners is at Fort Howard, and that would be another service that Jefferson students could, could be afforded as well. So there's a lot of information out there, and respectfully, I, I know that it was stated that this is an easy decision, or this was the easy one. In fact, I would offer, it's probably just the opposite. That the respect that we have for the people sitting in this room makes it far, far more difficult because we recognize the history that the folks sitting in this room know. We recognize that this is a school that people love dearly. Jefferson, we don't take that lightly. But as, as the administration, we felt it was important to look at the data, to understand the levels of enrollment, to provide the board the, the um understanding of what could be. And I have to share with you that there, there is um, as I look at the service and the support of children, I can see that there, there is no other place in this district where we would not have to uh break a school apart and leave some present and some move, but you could move the entire school. You can bring the principal along, you can bring all the services and children along together. And I think that when we think about the social, emotional um parts of the children being served, are we looking at possibly combining more resources, and we can see that. So that's that equity and access opportunity. The other piece that, when you look at the, the, the survey feedback, it talked about the importance of recognizing not only the consolidation piece, but what also is the opportunity um around repurposing a school. And one of the priorities is to really recognize, is there an opportunity to create and continue the vibrancy of Jefferson? And that's really what um as we looked at and went out for the grant for Head Start, we could see that was an opportunity as well. And so I know that people are saying, well, what other options are there out there? And now, first, I want to share why, why we came forward with this as a possible repurposing opportunity. The Head Start Grant, um, many of the students who would participate in this program, our youngest learners live near the center of Green Bay, and there was no other school that we could, we could open up in, in its entirety and at the same time be able to um take enrollment uh from one school and move it in its entirety into another school. Um, and so that was an important part of that, and recognizing that the student bus ride would be less and reduced. Parent engagements is a significant part of Head Start, and so a downtown location for parents' access and transportation was also um made this an, an option that made sense if we were going to be thinking about children and families as well. Head Start program at, at Jefferson had the possibility of bringing in community spaces and also keeping that neighborhood vibrant and making sure that it served our youngest learners, including those who are in the same attendance area currently as Jefferson. And then, you know, the other piece is thinking about um operational costs. Two things happen, by combining Fort Howard and Jefferson together, there is some overhead costs that could be repurposed and, and reinvested in children and families. Not only it could be at the combined school, but it could be used district-wide as well. And it, it, it seems like it may not be significant, but the piece that we were able to do, if, if, um, and that's why this came forward, the Head Start program is completely, completely um uh cost neutral in that they pay for everything. So any overhead that would be um captured through uh, uh combining the two schools could be reinvested in children and um resource for kids, so those are really the important things. The other piece that was critically important, as we talked with teachers, is class size. And uh we provided to the board, and I know the staff as well, um, the, the ability to actually see the class size. And you can see um that it, they will be small and responsive to the needs of children, so that's the thinking behind it and the rationale behind why we are here today. And again, um, we are looking at upward of about a thousand empty seats in elementary on the west side of our community. And I know that others have said, well, what else I, what else is, could go in um to the spaces? And I know that our next conversation, and it's already been out there, and I talked to the entire district office about this, is the repurposing of this building and the, or the sale of this building, possibly, and all of us moving out into schools on the west side. Um, so that's another conversation that we've been having, and it will continue to, to move, move forward. But I think that the piece, again, the most important thing is to recognize that this is a board decision um at the end of the day, and collectively, we've tried to bring forward to the board what we see as possibility that would serve children and families, not only today, but well into the future as well. So that was our goal.
Uh, so Brian, uh, one of the things you made in, said in your comments tonight, I think that was really important, was about data. We, you know, we want to make database decisions, and um, you know, you, you mentioned this packet, and I think there's a lot more data in it than just enrollment numbers, so when I sat down with you and, and the other team, uh, others uh from the team at Jefferson at that first parent listening session, um, a lot of questions came up, and my answer was that, that's a good question. I need answers to some of these questions before I feel like I can make an educated decision. So let me tell you uh some of the pieces of data that I saw in, in this that, that I felt resonated with me. Uh, first of all, in the last thirty years, there have been fluid boundaries between Jefferson and Fort Howard. We've moved kids from Fort Howard to Jefferson, we've moved kids from Jefferson to Fort Howard, and vice versa, over the last thirty years. So that history, I thought, was interesting. Um, we asked about class sizes, somebody said, well, if my kids go to, to Fort Howard, class sizes are gonna be thirty. Actually, if you take a look at projections uh right now, every single student at Jefferson will either be in the same size or smaller class sizes at Fort Howard than they are this year currently. So I thought that was interesting. I wanted to know about the size of the school, so if we were to combine these two schools, does it make this big, massive building? The reality is, if we combine them with current enrollments, it's the twelfth smallest elementary school out of twenty-six, so right around average, uh slightly smaller than average uh for our overall district. I had a lot of questions about resources, and at first I said, I want to um, I want to know what we're gonna do for resources, but in the conversations that I had with teachers um and with principals, I don't feel like I should dictate what resources should be in place at Fort Howard. I want the, the students of uh s- staff and families and administrators at Jefferson and Fort Howard to tell me that. Tell me what extra resources you need a- and uh what supports should be in place, because that, I shouldn't be the one to say that here at this board table. I want to know about the savings, how does it represent savings? At the time, it was a great question around Head Start. If we still operate that building, how do we save money? I've now come to understand that those are federal grant dollars, um, so the operation of a Head Start facility would not come out of our operating budget, and the, the savings uh just from the administrative team um and some other things would be about four hundred thousand dollars a year. The other piece of data that's in here that is really impactful to me is what we spend per pupil in this district. Jefferson, right now, averages about eighteen thousand seven hundred dollars per pupil. The smallest elementary, or uh on the opposite end of the spectrum, McCullough spends eleven thousand eighty-five dollars per pupil for a difference of about seventy-six hundred dollars, um, which I feel is pretty significant, but if you said, well, McCullough's needs are different than Jefferson's needs, that, that's, so let's take a look at our AGR schools. Sullivan Elementary is fourteen thousand two hundred and six dollars per student, or forty-five hundred dollars less than what we're spending at Jefferson. Eisenhower Elementary, very similar, fourteen-three, uh, about forty-four hundred dollars less that we're spending at kids at Eisenhower than we are at Jefferson. So that, that's pretty significant, I wonder if there's any Eisenhower or Sullivan parents who are here tonight to complain about how much we're not spending on their kids. When I have sat at this board table for the, the short time that I have, I hear about the, the class size issues that we have all over our district. When I hear about the lack of mental health supports all over our district, when I hear about not having dyslexia supports for many of our kids in our district, when I hear about rising healthcare costs that we're passing on to our teachers, all of those things require more resources. And there's not enough money coming in the door. Public education is not funded to the level that we need it to. And so when I'm presented with a solution, albeit unpopular with some people, and I appreciate, again, I appreciate because I've sat in your seat and fought for my school. I appreciate the love that you have, but the solution that's on the table provides a quality education at one of our highest performing elementary schools in the district. Uh, i- i- within walking distance for many of our students, and we've talked about the possibility of providing transportation. Um, it is my intention tonight, uh whether it be myself or if somebody else feels comfortable, to make a motion that uh suggests that we consolidate these two schools at the start of the twenty, uh, twenty, twenty, twenty-one school year. And I would prefer not to vote on that tonight, because I've realized that some of this data um is just coming out. And so I would prefer that we make that motion tonight, we allow people to react and to, to react to this data, and that next Monday, um, the, we, we have a special board meeting on the twenty-eighth that we vote on it uh then, so that's what I feel the data is showing to me. It's a hard decision, but again, I'm trying to take into consideration the twenty-one thousand students in our district, and I feel like this solution provides the, uh, a quality opportunity for all of the students, and I've gotten the answers to the questions that I had going into this, so that's where I stand right now.
Yes, in a, in a minute, is that okay? Can we, can we get more board? Or do you, I don't know, what does the board?
Yeah, I think we should, we should have a conversation.
Let's, well, uh, I'll call you up in a few minutes, once we have other people that are weighing in. Go ahead, Christina.
Thank you, Eric. Um, great points. I just wanted to touch on a few things as well, um, just sort of piggyback off you, and I appreciate the um the action to put the motion out there, let, put this information out there, because that was one of my first concerns as well, was how are we gonna vote on this tonight when people are seeing this for the first time? You know, the process of this, uh, you know, going back to when we had our um, our retreat, which is funny, because it's not a retreat, it sounds like that should be fun, it's just a very long meeting. To where, eh, when it came out was, um, when, when I found out that the, the parent letter went out was for me, as a school board uh member, honestly jarring. I didn't know that the letter was going out, and this isn't to point the finger at anyone and say someone did something wrong. But there are a lot of lessons to be learned from this process. Um, there always are. Um, and so um, the, the, the frustration that the community has felt, the frustration that the families have felt, that I have felt, that the staff has felt, i- is real. Um, and I think regardless of how the vote goes and how the process goes, we need to be introspective and courageous enough to say, like, there were things that we didn't do well, and how can we ensure that um, as the district moves forward, that we, we learn from that and we, we can adjust? Moving forward, I will say, all the things that you, you shared were, were key for me. Um, I was very concerned about uh the staff, because when I did meet with staff at Jefferson and Fort Howard, and I did go to both schools, and I heard what you said, Melody, like, you gotta go, you gotta go, and you gotta get, see the people and talk. I did that, and I, and I believe that many of you did, and I'll let you speak for yourself. But I, I heard you, and I, I felt that, and I made sure that that was a priority for me um over the past two weeks and, and the past month. Um, but one of the things that staff was saying is, um, what about me? Where, where do I go? Am I gonna be forced to go to Fort Howard? Am I gonna, am I gonna lose my job? Am I gonna, and, and so that was one of the first pieces that Michelle and I talked about, and that was ensuring that you would keep your, your, your position, your salary, your, 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 you know, your job in the district, and you would have the flexibility to either go to Fort Howard or to choose to go elsewhere, and that was the first piece, is I wanted to ensure that that was very, very clear, um, because, you know, there are people that are gonna wanna do either, right, and we need to respect that. The second piece was, is um, the, the, the funding for the supports, and, and that came out too, again, we've talked about this, you know, the equation and how we figured that out. And what I heard from staff say was, we need that to be a clear commitment, that we know if we do this, that the staff and the students and the families are going to need more support, and so that equation needs to go away. And I said, yep, I agree with you, absolutely. And then the staff said, but we want to make those decisions of how we spend that money, and I said, yep, you're right. I don't want to decide what those supports are gonna look like for you. So as a, as a board, if this were to go through, I am committed to ensuring that you will have a leadership team, a transition team made up of staff, families, students, community members, key stakeholders, that will not only be um providing feedback to the district, but will be key. will not only be providing feedback to the district, but will be key decision makers to ensure that if there is a transition, if this goes through, that you all will be deciding what those supports look like and how that sort of transition unfolds and is planned for moving forward with your school communities. Because that's really the the challenge of this, right? Is it's not, again, I said this two weeks ago, it's not just Jefferson. We're talking about Fort Howard. And Fort Howard staff has a lot of apprehension as well. They've done a lot of work, just like other elementary schools, and they want to ensure that that work is held in fidelity, recognizing that they also want to be inclusive and open to to Jefferson. I heard a lot of staff talk about a timeline, worried that was, you know, construction in Jefferson going to be, you know, sort of complicate the learning environment. So I think there's some more information that we need to gather there to demonstrate back to Jefferson staff what that would look like. Again, if this were to go through, I'm just sort of telling you what I'm seeking and what I have. And then the other piece was the class sizes. And I and I appreciate that we did provide that specific data to you. That was something that, again, when I when I talked with Dr. Langenfeld, the commitment was the class sizes are going to be small. And I said, that's not good enough. We need to have very specific numbers for families so they can they can see. Now, I'm not saying that this is all swayed me to one decision or the other, but rather to provide the commitments to you all that I believe are important to go to your point about data. This is the data that will help to inform.
Where does a parent buy?
Well,
We've got copies.
We've got copies. And that's what we were saying, we're we're going to give this to you so you can see this. And that's why I was saying, I don't feel comfortable voting on this, because you haven't seen this yet. And you need to look at this and spend time with that. So anyways, I just wanted to share that, that there's been a lot of work happening. And I know there's still some information missing. But that data on this document does provide, I think, a firmer commitment to where the district believes we could be going with this move. So I'll pause there.
Mary Ann, do you want to come up?
I'm up from here.
No, because the The one in the middle.
There you go.
I have a lot of questions and a lot of issues, as you know, or you probably guessed. Why, when you've already got the Head Start program at Keller, why is there need to be a move over bringing all those kids over to Jefferson? You already have a home. That's one thing. The second thing is the data, sometimes you can make data look however you want it to look. You're intelligent enough to know that. A lot of the data that was given out, I don't know who data was sent out to or lists of, give me your feedback. I'm guessing that when I was a principal, most of the feedback I got from our families was because I went and got the data, not because they mailed something back to me. When you talk about school size, what are you doing at Weekeak? What do we do for rich kids in this school district? And what do we do for poor kids? Somebody better get on the right page. You spent millions of dollars on a gifted and talented school, when we know and the research continually reinforces. Children that are classified gifted and talented are classified gifted and talented, not because there's a brain impact, it's because they have family support and educational opportunities outside of the school system. Those kids don't have it. We took kids to the zoo a couple of weeks ago, and that was the first time that they'd been there. It's just very unfair. I could go on and on. You're probably tired, as tired of listening to me talk as I am listening to you talk for the last three hours. And congratulations to whoever came up up here and made that statement before about wasting so much time. It's an important issue to the people that it's an important issue, too. This is much more important. Bringing 121 children over to Fort Howard is not going to make things all that different. It really will not. Will they benefit? Who's going to benefit? A lot of the things you're saying, well, they'll benefit, the kids will benefit from if they go to Fort Howard. They're already taking place in that little school. We don't need, those families don't want to leave that area. When I looked through this thing tonight, I saw the history. At one time, it was that gray area again. The reason the gray area what gray area was given to Elmore at one time was because there was a very active railroad running through that track, which now I rarely, all the years that I spent there, I rarely saw or heard a train go through. Instead, they crossed them over a very busy street, Mather, and put a crossing guard over there. I mean, it just is all. I'm just going to say one more thing. It's right to do the right thing, and you're not doing the right thing. When it's time, this is again, from Hamilton, when it's time for you to go, and we all are going to go, whether you like it or not, who will tell your story? And what will they say about you? That's your legacy. And if that's what you want, then act on it. I'm very disappointed. And I ran for school board a couple of years ago. I'm glad that I lost. Isn't that sad? Because I had a lot to offer. Thank you.
Rhonda, then Andrew.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to what I was asking in the beginning, the open forum session, part of the the meeting. And it was stated to staff, it was stated to staff at both schools, from what I understand, that there's going to be a transitional period, which will mean transitional services. Right? Okay. So when I so thinking about that, thinking about how Eric talked about how expensive for, or I'm sorry, Jefferson students are. They're $1,830 more expensive than Fort Howard students. And I'm just reading numbers. I'm not entirely sure how, if we're going to, I'm interested in knowing the transitional period, because again, like I'd stated before, that's not a, we're not making a indefinite commitment to students and families, because some of these families have kids that are coming forward. So I'm not understanding how that $18,752 is still going to, if we're going to, you know, we say this is going to be just fine. Don't worry, because we're going to provide the same services, if not more. I'm not sure how that's possible if we don't take the support with them. So the money part of that kind of just is, to me, just isn't really enough to make it even a point in the argument for that. Because I'm not sure how you could guarantee the supports, the extra supports. I have so much stuff written down. All of the things that we talked about, the transportation, special education supports, that there's a lot of things up in the air, combined resources. But combined resources, when you're adding an additional hundred and some kids, you know, you're coming from a school of 115, and then 183, and going into 298. So you're going to, you're going to, and I think we all need to just say it, we're going to re-traumatize students. That's a fact. And I think if you don't understand that, you should probably look into that. So that's a fact. We're going to do that. And so by doing that, we owe it to them to spend every dime and penny we can to make sure that they have that support when they come over, if they come over. But it's not clear to me, and I'm glad that Brian brought that up, because I'd really like some clarification on the transitional period. I had a lot of, I went to Fort Howard as well, and I had a lot of discussion about that. When you say small class size, and they would stay the same, is that just through the transitional period? Okay, so isn't it, isn't it fair to say, then, that this $18,752, if Fort Howard students already are 16922 without the extra students coming, I'm not sure how that number stays, if we're going to give and deliver what we say we're going to do, that number will probably increase. I don't know how it doesn't.
It goes, the number, and you see that in the numbers that Eric presented, the the economy of scale is is what you get with a larger schools. So Fort Howard's cost per student will also go down in a school of
To what?
A school of 300.
Go down to what?
I don't, I don't know.
I think we should know.
Probably similar.
It'd probably be similar, yeah, probably to Dodi. I mean, what we're, what are we saying is
Which is what?
Operations, it's on
Dodi is 15277.
Where's that?
It's
I looked it up on the website, yep.
There's a
15277.
So the the savings comes from administration, operations of the school, and
After-school program.
The after-school program. Go ahead, Michelle.
I think one of the important parts of a transitional period, it really depends. And that's why one of the important parts of what what transition talks about is that it is, it's determined actually by a transition team within that framework. It could be one year, two year. And it's, and it's really that adjustment period, making sure that the capacity of the individuals working collectively together are that's built up. And and I think that's a really important part of conversations that I've had with staff at both schools, is that recognition that together, you know, they're ready to go in terms of being able to share their resources and collaborate as well. You know, the other piece, the other piece is the the recognition of, of, you know, being able to to repurpose and keep a facility in the district and not have to sell a facility that you eventually hope will come, you know, is is a place and space where the district at some point down the road could also repurpose again or change again. You know, that's the other piece of this opportunity that you wouldn't get if you didn't put a Head Start school in there, a full school in there, if you were to sell. So you have a building that you'll be able to to keep vibrant in the neighborhood, and at the same time, be able to support a school at a better economy of scale with more resource. And I think that the collaboration piece between teachers and staff should not be dismissed as an opportunity. The central office people and the resources that go into two schools will now be reduced to one in the oversight and that. And that's not included in any of those dollar figures at all. And there's a lot of people and resource and that that come to to two schools that now will go to one as well. So the other piece with the Head Start, and I just wanted to put that out there, is right now, we have three schools where the students attend, and they will be co-located at the same place and have additional support and resources as a result of that as well, if this were to be passed through.
Andrew, I think, Andrew, you had a question?
I have a couple. So did we get, what new information do we have as of today about the about the timeline of grant construction, or the timeline of of the Head Start grant? Because although I'm not going to make my Jefferson decision based only on the Head Start grant, the timing of it is is relevant.
Thank you.
We had a call today with the administrators of the Head Start program that are assigned to the Green Bay School District. They're waiting on the application. So in order to spend the dollars under the Head Start grant, you have to complete a, it's called the 1303 report. And it's a detailed list of 28 items that have to be submitted to the federal government to approve either the purchase or the expenditure of funds for purposes of renovation. Included, and I don't know, is Mike still here?
Yeah.
Okay, so Mike can come and correct me if I'm wrong. He was on the call as well. Included in the the report is a number of things that we have to do, such as getting an environmental study of the land. That takes, the last time we, there's only two providers in the state of Wisconsin that do those environmental studies for federal grant purposes. And based on their workload, it can take upwards of four to six weeks to get that study done. We have to get an appraiser's report on the property as to the value of the property. The we have to do a real estate market assessment as to why that particular building was chosen with respect to other available property downtown Green Bay for purposes of a Head Start program on the West Side. So the work that Sally will have to do will take a good four to six weeks, but we can't, she can't move on anything until the board has approved what building that Head Start is going into, because we can't work on getting any of the, an architectural rendering of the changes, what the cost will be for those changes, an itemized list of the costs. All those things have to be submitted to the federal government. Then, once that is submitted to the federal government, they will review those changes, that proposal, and then come back with any questions. So that could take upwards, I believe, with respect to the East Side, purchase last year that took about two to three months for the federal government to come back with an answer on our 1303 report. What we're pushing up against as well is that Sally is on a five-year cycle for the expenditure of the grant, and that expires June 30 of 2020. They did indicate today in our phone call that we could get an extension. It's not a carryover, but it's a different, a no-cost extension. But we can't apply for the no-cost extension until they've approved the 1303 report. So it's pretty timed out as, and then getting in to do the construction and not causing a disruption to the kids in Jefferson right now, who are there for the rest of the school year, is also going to need to be timed with what Mike and his construction crew is able to do.
So some, now, sometimes these extensions are merely of formality, and sometimes they're not. So what is it this time? Is it?
We asked, and they would not give us an answer, one way or the other. We are hopeful, but they would not guarantee that we could get an extension.
So for, yeah, one, one thing, I guess the reason I'm asking, and I'll move on to a couple other, a couple other questions I have. For me, while I'm not, I don't have my mind finally made up, if if the proposal included moving kids around from school to school while construction happens while they're in the building, or even moving kids within the school so construction would happen within their building, that to me would be so horrible that I would, I would, that would make me be a hard no on Jefferson. So on consolidation. So that's, I guess, I need to know if we do it, would, would construction happen while kids were in the building? Or or is that off the table?
I'm going to defer to Mike on that.
Is is the, is there a possibility with what we know about grant timelines and things, that if we approve this, construction would hap, would happen while kids are, I mean, not at the moment, but would construction happen while kids were in school? Is that a possibility? Or is that off the table? Or does it depend whether an extension happens or not?
Well, a lot would depend on the extension.
Well, a lot would depend on the extension. If we have to complete the project by June thirtieth, work would have to start before the end of the school year. Um, if we get the extension, when that, then we would have the entire summer and we could possibly doing some finishing up in, in September. So that, the, the extension would be critical.
And how, how much is the grant?
I believe they quoted today the construction aspect of the grant is one point nine million dollars.
Okay, so if it's so if we don't get the extension, which we don't know, which we won't even be able to know if we can get the extension for, sounds like at a very best case scenario would be six to eight weeks. Probably more the way you were talking about two to three months after the, this. I guess unless we're deciding consolidation, you know, of course you could consolidate without the grant, but the grant is the thing that's accelerated the timetable of this discussion. So for me, I guess, I'll just, I guess that, well, I made my, my point. Construction while school is in session would convert me from being open-minded on this issue to being an absolute hard no. And I, I'll have more discussions over the next week. I think Eric's point about voting next week when it's very clear what we're voting about is, is the right way to, to do this. And then another thing, another thing for me, while I do respect that we don't want to tell people what the staffing would be at the new building, at the same time, I've seen too many occasions where we've done things the informal way and then, and I just, there can't be an oops here. So if if I support consolidation, one absolute requirement would be a written class size, even though there will be people who will say that's micromanaging. Uh, some form of written ongoing minimum staffing levels, even though some people will say that that is micromanaging. Um, now maybe there's, I'm not saying it's without flexibility, but at a minimum, I think the amount of staffing, um, the amount of staff positions stays, total FTE doesn't drop and trans, I, I, there's no way I'm okay with a undefined transition period that I'm gonna be told later what that is. So a lot of, I, I'm not sold. A lot of things would have to be there in, in writing that would go farther than the board has directed in writing on things before. For me to even think about it, or if you're gonna be moving kids around and doing construction during the school year, then, then I'm out anyways, so. That's where, that's my perspectives on this right now, and I think next week is the time to vote rather than dragging it out another monthly cycle.
Do you have the WIC-RAC numbers?
Cost per student?
Can you find those? Can I go next, please? What is it?
Fourteen thousand ninety-three.
Fourteen ninety-three?
Yep. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so many notes, so many thoughts. Okay. So we say we would like to provide transportation. Are we providing transportation and what is the dollar figure on that?
At this point in time, that would be one, I, I wanna, I wanna pull back. I think one of the things that's really important is to recognize that when we brought this forward, it's similar to, to when we've, we've gone out for referendum and had decisions and discussions about what the board would choose. Jeremy has looked at transportation for us. I can get that dollar figure. We're talking, at this point, we were talking about a hub situation. Um, but I would defer to the board because I don't know what the ask is. If it's we're hub busing from the school uh to the eight or nine blocks over, or are we talking about full pickup? That's, cause I don't, I need two di- if you want two different prices, I can get those for you.
To me, that falls under the, what does the, the team tell us? Let's get the parents and the teachers together, and if they feel like this is a priority for us, then, but then let's get those two different options. But I don't think that here today we should say, yes, we're providing busing. That's what we're talking about.
Talking about, yeah.
That's, yeah, that's what we have to talk about.
That would be part of the teamwork to determine what makes best, what makes sense, Rhonda.
But that's not something we can do. I, I can't vote even on this until I know this information. Parents are still asking about that. That's such a big thing for people who work. For people who are concerned about their students going to a much bigger school. That's the thing that continues to come up. But more importantly, because that to me, that takes care of the student, that takes care of the family. That should be something we just, that's, that's a priority. That should just be worked out in general, and that, that's, I'm still not sure I'm I don't know how you would do that, especially after school, how you would work that out. What did you mention, um, Michelle, about the referendum in transportation?
What I was saying is, is often we don't have all the details till we have groups that work it out once we make a commitment to moving on a certain piece, which we did. You know, these are, so, so when we brought forward um the de- the, the referendum many, many years ago, we talk about things in concept, the board supports going forward with it, and then we, then we go out and, and have those conversations and find out if there's any, um, where the objections are and, and what that means. And that's really what we're talking about is there are going to be opportunities and things that come up where people have questions, concerns, objections, and we don't always have all the answers when we initially make, make the decision and administration gets the answers as they come forward. So for example, you talk about a transition team and if they say, well, this is an essential piece, which you just talked about, Rhonda, then we would go back and say, yes, if that's what you want, this is what that would cost us, and then that discussion would take place. But I guess my point being is that we don't always have everything that people want or need or all the objections or, or desires uh before we move forward sometimes with, with this kind of conversation with the board.
But I would say to that, when you're asking to displace families in a, from a school that they value, when you're asking to, to do this, when you're asking a community to that it has a neighborhood school to accept what you're doing, I think you should have those answers. And I think that we should have had those answers bef- before this was even presented um as a, as a formal proposal because these are the things that people are going to lose sleep over. We're all gonna be fine, all of us sitting here, right? We'll all be fine. We'll be fine. Um, but I, I think it's important to, to think about, these are the things that I want to be able to say to staff, to families. You know what? You are gonna have transportation and this is how it's gonna go down, and you're gonna have it for this long. Rather than, I'm, we're gonna put this out to a committee and I'm waiting for an answer. I don't, I know I can't say that with a, with a straight face. There's just no way I can do that. Um, so that's important. When we talk about bringing staff over and because I'm hearing from staff, I've heard from both s- school staff, um, I have yet to hear anybody say that I cannot wait to collaborate with this staff coming in. And it's not that, you know, if we only had had that, it's, that's not it at all. And they're not saying that they're not open to doing what they're supposed to do or they have to do. But this is it's not a warm fuzzy, we should stop selling it like it is because it's not real. The, the issue when it comes, for me, when it comes to that, uh, and it was mentioned, that they had a school where they worked for years on a system to get things to where they're now exceeding expectations and they have that down, and they're, they're, they're concerned about with teachers coming over and teachers, okay, teachers who were displaced from their school and didn't make that choice, right? Maybe some of us don't know what that's like to have something done to us like that. It's, it's not easy. So then you're, you're having teachers come over and now you are just going to and you're gonna, assuming you're gonna expend money on professional development, there's gonna be work being done there. So, so that's an expense. I'm just trying to understand that, how we're gonna have all this extra money. I just don't see it. Because if we're going to guarantee the services that the kids need and deserve, and we're going to put in the transportation piece and we're going to provide professional development, um, I'm just not sure how, and, and I would like to actually, I would like to see what that looks like because it's a lot of lofty generalizations and not really anything concrete. You know, we know what the enrollment looks like. This, we've seen this sheet like a hundred times. I'd like to see all of the things that the, the, the people that we talk to at these meetings, the people that have been calling and have been messaging me. These are the questions they still don't have answers to. And so I can't say I'm willing to vote on these things until we have those, those questions answered. Because then what it looks like and what your, the question you're actually answering then comes to, which was um prompted in the beginning. You know, do we know this is better for students? How do we know this? How do we actually do something like this if we don't know that it's better? And, and why is it better? Because we're saying there's combined resources, but it's gonna happen during a transitional period. Um, we can't even guarantee that. We, not, a lot of us may not even be on this board in, you know, a year, two, or three, and that, that matters to me because a lot of this is just, sounds good, but it's not real um succinct, it's general.
So you use the, the comment, what they need and deserve. I would argue that there's kids all over our district that aren't getting what they need and deserve and um so that's one thing that I, I tried to weigh, again, thinking about all of our other schools. I think about the transportation piece. First of all, we don't know that transportation is what people want. You know, we, you know, can, can say that anecdotally, but to present here's uh what we propose for transportation, I think is presumptuous. And so I would also just echo or, or point out that right now there's an after-school program with no transportation. Um, so parents have to come to, and we don't allow kids to walk home in our after-school program, so parents, somebody has to come and pick those kids up. And we don't provide transportation at any of the ten or eleven or twelve after-school sites. Um, and if we did provide transportation at Jefferson or, or at Fort Howard, I, I would say, just like uh I said earlier with the amount of money that we're spending at Sullivan and Eisenhower, why wouldn't they say, well, why don't we get transportation? Why don't we transport kids from the after-school program at, at any of our other sites? Um, so a- again, trying to think about the bigger picture and what's best for all of our schools and trying to provide more equity for our kids. Not from the after-school program, they're not? That's not, that's against the policy, so I guess I'd have to look into that. Walked, yeah, so they can do that.
Um, Mel- Melody, are you, you done?
Yeah.
Okay, Melody, um, Linsmeyer would like to speak. Oh, and also Yeah, no, that's fine.
Okay, my name is Julie Latimer-Jrezick. I teach FIAID at Jefferson, MacArthur, Southwest, and Dan's. And these are probably things that should have been said a while ago, but they're coming out now, and I think it's really important for what you said. Um, because when we look at this later, we gotta think about what we didn't do right. I, I heard about this when you had your retreat. And we were told, don't worry about it. Don't worry about it. It's just rumblings. It's just rumors. Why then didn't you bring Fort Howard and Jefferson teachers together? Say, hey, this is what we're thinking. What do you think? What, could you make this work? Have us both buying in. Cause this sucks to be told a Tuesday in a parent letter, go home on Wednesday. Not fair. I have chosen for ten years to be at Jefferson over any other school in the district, even the Sullivans, even the WIC-RACs. I have chosen to be there. Everyone goes to Fort Howard. I won't go. I'm just the gym teacher who has been with these kids since they were five. I won't get to go. They have their own FIAID teacher. That doesn't seem fair to them. And I don't know, where are these Keller kids? They have a hundred and seventy kids according to this that I got an hour ago. And you're gonna take their head start kids out of there. How many kids does that leave Keller with? About a hundred and twenty, similar to what we have right now? Then what happens to them? It says that the numbers next year are gonna look like this. You can't, every kid, you don't know how many children come up to me during the day with tears and hugs and say, my mom said I can't go there next year. They're already enrolling. Parents with our kids, they're going to be in control. And if that means making a plan right now to get out of Dodge, they're going. So I don't know how you can even think a hundred and seven kids are going over to Fort Howard. I beg to differ. And Fort Howard is a high AGR. You bet they are. Love that. But they've had so much support that has recently left them, right? All that federal stuff that they got. So we take that away from them and then we add a hundred and s- six or fifty-six or however many kids go over there and a bunch of staff who have been basically pushed. I can understand why they're worried. I said, if you could have brought us in together, that could have been really cool. We could have really made this up like an awesome thing. But I kinda feel like you're too late. That's really unfortunate for the kids.
Hello. I wasn't planning on speaking, but that's the way this always happens when I get here. Another, another meeting. We are at the end of it. And I'm mad. They have to teach our children tomorrow. And you keep putting us at the end. I'm emotional. I have asked questions and gotten partial answers and asked more questions and gotten partial answers. I gave a list of fifteen questions the last time we were in here. I got partial answers from one board member. And I'm emotional because this is my family's life that's on the line right now. It's these staff members' lives that are on the line right now. And I can't even get whole answers. So I'm asking my questions right now in front of you, so maybe I can get answers. I'm, I see this list of what the elementary school size according to Third Friday count is, whatever that means. And it gives a list of those numbers. What I would like to know is what the capacity is in all of these schools. So I wanna know how low are each one of these schools? And I don't wanna have to go search for it because I went onto that DPI site or whatever and that's I don't know how to navigate this stuff. You guys do.
So I would like those numbers. I wanna know when this grant became, when it was, became aware to our district. Whether we applied for it or not, when did we know as a district that this grant was out there? Does anybody have that answer?
To apply for or?
That it was available, that the federal government had this grant that was available out there. When, when did we know about it? Not when did we apply for it, but when did we know about it? So that was the first we knew about it.
I'm writing these down, Melanie, and I know, Melody, and I know that, um, I know we had tried to set up a phone call at one point.
That was before the last meeting and then I submitted fifteen questions. And it looks like you've answered some of them in this, which I just, I I think one of the staff from Jefferson just so generously handed to me, which just teased me right off too. That they're, they're allowed to have this information printed out and handed to them, but the parents don't, I'm sorry, I'm very angry. I think you guys are handling this like cuckah because I'd like to say some other things. So that's what I wanted to know. I wanted, I wanna know when the grant became available. If if it was last winter. And you guys had this retreat this summer. And it was, you know, just bouncing ideas off the wall. And then, um, not a month into the school year, we have this meeting, um, at the school that nobody really knew what it entailed and and then I, to me, it set off all types of red flags. So I started reaching out to a couple of my board members. One that didn't really know and the other one that seemed to know quite a bit. So who's not communicating? Who is not communicating that one board member knows a lot and another one knows very little?
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yes.
I think that what, I know that what you're saying is is something that I have shared, being deeply concerned about as well, is communication. I said that from the beginning when I started talking tonight. Are you, are you okay? So so but what what I'm just letting you know is, for me personally, a lot of the information that's in here and in the work has been digging in to find that information for you, um, for everyone. But you're exactly right. That has been a struggle for us as a board and as a district to ensure that there is consistent, equitable communication with all of us. You're absolutely right. And I I don't deny that. And I think your point earlier about, you know, why didn't we start with the staff? Um, I have shared that with other board members as well, saying that, um, we've really teed ourselves up for not so great of an outcome right from the beginning because of the way that we teed and or didn't tee off in the right way. So I I completely agree with you and I hear you. It was a misstep. You're absolutely right.
It's not just a misstep, misstep of not including the staff, it's a misstep that you guys are not communicating. And how are you representing this community if you can't even talk to each other? And whether that's the district to the board or between board members. Because when I call my board members for answers because I'm worried about what's going on or potentially could be going on in my school. And they don't have answers or they don't have the common knowledge between each other. All that does is increase worry in me. And I'm and I'm up at night worrying. This has taken over my life for the last month. I was out there handing out flyers, stopping parents, I'm posting everywhere I can because it's important to me, but it's taken over my life and I just want answers. Shouldn't be this hard. And transportation is a concern for me. I'm just gonna throw these out there. Not for after school program because that's not the problem, but when my son gets older and instead of going down the alleyway to go to school, he now has to cross Mather, Ashland. Maybe take a left onto Kellogg if he goes that way because I won't be there with him. Or maybe he'll have to make a right onto, uh, what is it, Main Street. All very busy streets. And, uh, we are definitely less than two miles away, so I'd, I I wouldn't feel comfortable with my seven or eight or nine year old doing that walk yet. I see, you know, some kids do it and I wonder where are their parents? So yeah, that is a concern and and so I'm glad that that was brought up. I'd like to to know, e- even if you said, um, you said possibly a hub where they're, you know, shuttling them, at least that would make me feel more comfortable for my child's safety. This, I I heard some conversation about construction at Jefferson this year. This is the first I heard about it. First of all, in the letter, they said changes may affect this school year. And then last time we we were all here, we were told this is in the very beginning stages. And now we have, you know, conversations from Head Start guys saying, um, potentially during the school year. So which is it? It just blows my mind, like, nothing, nothing is like it, like it said, every time it just changes. I would not be okay with my child being in a school where construction is happening. If this happens because you guys really get all of the information together and everybody's on the same page, everybody has access to the same information. Everybody's done their due diligence. And, um, and you guys truly decide that this is what's best for all of Green Bay area students. I want to feel good about that. And the only way I'm gonna feel good about that is having the truth. And making sure that our children are taken care of to the best of your ability. I get it, you don't wanna spend those ex, those extra dollars on our kids, but we need those extra dollars. If we are going to be moved, we need them to transition. And I don't know what that transition looks like. I'm not a teacher, I've never been through this before. The kind of transitions my family has gone through is moving from one house to another and that takes time. My five year old is still saying he misses his old house and that was almost three years ago. So who knows how long this transition will take? So it looked like you were saying that Jefferson is allotting about four thousand dollars per student more than the other schools. What what is, what are those going towards? What are those extra dollars going towards? Do we know, is it in services because they are underprivileged or is it because they have disabilities that that they need these extra services for? What is that four thousand dollars for? Because just, if it's just a facility, then I get it. But if these, these four thousand dollars are because these are disadvantaged children, then then cutting those costs seems pretty minimal to me. Just saying, as a parent. And and currently, this this child of mine does not get services, but I have two older children that do have behavioral and mental health issues that in the past have needed services, so those services matter. How would the overhead costs that the district will save be used elsewhere? You said you didn't really know what that looks like at this time, but I think those are answers that we need, that that I need. Because if if my children being at that school that I chose for that village to raise my child is over some dollars, then I wanna make sure those dollars are well invested. Yes.
About that, would you, is that something you would rather see the dollar, like an estimated dollar amount that a a transition team or a leadership team would be able to make that decision? Or would it make you feel more comfortable? Or maybe it's neither. Or would it make you feel more comfortable to say this is what we would anticipate that would look like to give you more, like, to drill it down for you? Does that make sense?
I don't really know what any of that would look like because we haven't had those conversations. I don't even know what the needs are in the district. But because this is a school that is highly diverse and is high risk children, I would hope that the savings go to help other children in our district that maybe aren't being helped by the Title I. Maybe that's not a school that receives those kind, I don't know, I I don't even know, but these are just thoughts. But I do think that it would be really nice if the parents could be a part of those conversations. And I would also like to know what the overhead cost is of Jefferson, the building cost. I know you said somewhere around five hundred thousand, but it's hard for me to imagine that a school that size is five hundred thousand dollars.
Sorry, just close it. Um, what what the information that we had in front of us was, um, I lost it, sorry, but the the that number that I said, which was about four hundred thousand, was just in the building costs, the administration and the after school program. So that's how it got to that. And clerical, yeah. No, there's no teachers in that number. So that would be taking, you know, if you took all the counselors, all the social workers, all the FIAID teachers, you didn't remove any of those savings. If all of those people went over to Fort Howard, we would just save about four hundred thousand dollars. In operating them. So that's the information that I have.
So all of those people would move over to Fort Howard, correct? Or we wouldn't have janitors or whatnot, but you said like all of the the occupational therapists and all of that would move over. And and so after all of those move over, the district is still paying their salaries. And so what's left is, I'm trying to understand how it's a four hundred thousand dollar savings.
I'll, I'll take a shot at it. So you would have what you would have, because I I had this question too and needed the answer before I could go forward because I was thinking, okay, wouldn't a Head Start center in Jefferson still need a custodian? And wouldn't a Head Start center in Jefferson still need a, um, a full time office person? But the separate, the separate Head Start money would be able to pay for those things in full, freeing up those other dollars. So the 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 largest chunk of it would be, um, I would see it as being the, um, the principal, the custodian, the clerical and then some utilities and then after after school programming, but that's in a different fund, so it doesn't affect things as, that's not as direct of a connection. Um, and I just wanna be clear when I say those things, I don't anticipate the principal or custodian or clerical person to lose their job. They might, uh, there would be, I think everyone would have a position in the district, absolutely. It's just a question of how those things would be funded because they would be funded out of Head Start.
But we can't make people move over to the school. Right. So it, but by saying that, we're not, and and I'm not saying this at all to staff. But I think it's, it's, it puts them in a really precarious position because it's hard enough to teach these days, but then to go to a school that you didn't actually choose to be at under these circumstances. Can we say that the combined resources, the support are going to? We can't really say that they're going to be what they are. We can't, we really don't have control over that.
Well, we can replace, if someone chooses not to go over, then we replace their, we we bring, we open, we post the position as another position. If they choose not to go over.
Yeah, but do you hear what I'm saying? It's, they have relationships with the kids, the families, but maybe for some reason, logistically, for whatever, that doesn't work for them. Because they really wanted to teach in a small neighborhood school. You know, the schools that we talk about a lot that we say we care about. But now we can just replace them. I I just feel like just so we're aware that this is what we're creating by doing this. It's important.
I think one of the pieces, and I I see, we had a conversation with Justin and Dave Harzwick, um, from the union just to talk about the guarantee that they opportunity if they would not choose, teachers would not choose in Paris to go with the students, um, would be on the table. The other piece too is that that, um, in my conversations with staff, I think that that a lot will really depend on how, how, when they should the board decide to consolidate, how teachers would come together and have those conversations and feel about moving forward. And I think that's one of the important parts of of, um, giving staff that opportunity before any staffing process as well, to understand what it would look like. You know, we have it's not, eh, to your point, is this, is this an ideal situation? No, it's not. I would be remiss if I I didn't say that that in hindsight, there were many, many times I have reflected back in terms of these conversations and when and should they have been held and if they were held in the summer, would that have been better? Would people not have been available? I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of thinking backwards to look forward. And and I own that, but I also, I also wanna say that I have a lot of faith in our teachers. I have every confidence in our teachers that that they will, they will be responsive if the board chooses to consolidate. They are responsive, they are extraordinary. I've lived through our teachers through Act Ten. And I've seen how amazing our teachers are. So it's not ideal in terms of looking at three hundred students per year in declining enrollment and a thousand open seats on the West Side, just in elementary alone. That's not an ideal circumstance the di- district is in. And this is one potential way to start to begin to address it. That's, that's what really we're talking about. And and we're, we would do and are committed to doing whatever we can to transition the very best we can in supports of the children and the families and the staff and the community that surrounds these schools. Because the love and support that has gone into Jefferson, um, there's love and support that goes into Fort Howard and we would hopefully um, want everyone to feel part of continuing to support children and families in those neighborhoods, so.
Did you have more to say?
I just wanted to say that I totally believe in these teachers too, but you're gonna make a vote without these teachers ever getting together.
You know, some, some wanted to do that and the question is, 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 you know, I look at it and say, is this eh, that's an interesting conversation because we had it with the, with the, with the Fort Howard fa- uh, family as well. Just recently in terms of wanting to get together and and I I think that 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 was not something that at that point in time that was a shared desire and the concern that I had was, and and it sounds like it was not the warranted concern is. that was a shared desire, and the concern that I had was, and, and it sounds like it was not the warranted concern is, are we, are we moving and assuming that it's done? And then will people believe that it's already, you know, completed and, and feel that they didn't have a voice? So that's the other piece of the story, and, you know, you can look at it two ways, but I, I take your point, thank you for that.
Christina wanted to say something.
Uh, to go back to something that, um, one of the speakers today had shared, uh, eighteen hours ago, just kidding, like five hours ago. Uh, it has also been brought up, and Michelle, I don't know where, I don't see it on here, and I know we've talked about it, but I haven't seen anything clear is, what are the other options? Because we have talked about it, and I think it's a valuable point, um, to go back to that, to say, if, if Jefferson is an option, if there are other two options, how do we weigh the cost-benefit analysis of the others? Um, and can we, you know, where are we with that? Is that information living somewhere that I don't know? And if it's not, can we? So I'll turn that to you.
Sure. I think as, as we looked through, um, all the different places and spaces that you could put a Head Start building, I think one of the most important, um, pieces in our minds when we filled out the grant was the recognition that with a thousand seats, we should be able to repurpose something we already had in place and, and support a hundred and twenty children in our schools. They were, at the end of the day, without, um, moving parts of children in schools, and without doing that, Keller was an option, and still is an option. I think the piece that you missed then is the recognition that there is opportunity to, to, um, provide a, a co-located central program for families in our, in our downtown area, where many of our families need resources and supports. Um, we lose the opportunity to, uh, maintain one of our buildings with a vibrant, um, school community of Head Start children, and at the same time, uh, take two, two small schools and unite them and, and, and support, uh, their services. And then to be able to take, um, the Keller School and look at that as a potential home. And that was part of it, when we talked about it in July, um, that the Keller space could be considered for a potential future space for a current school that's in rental property, the N E W School and the John Dewey Academy of Learning School. So the Keller site is, is much larger, um, it would be a co-location. There would be no cost savings, um, by going into a facility that's already there, um, like it would if we were able to have a standalone school at Jefferson. But again, it does not, it does not meet the, the central location needs for children and families in the Head Start program. It does, it does, um, maintain, um, a school that students eighteen thousand dollars and, and I don't know what Port is fifteen. So it maintains that, but it doesn't address collaboration. It doesn't address, um, resources and, and having the Jefferson children having access to a social worker every day. It doesn't address that at all. It doesn't address that, and it doesn't, um, really address empty seats, so. Sure.
Can we put that in writing, so the community can look at those options that you just laid out? And some of that information of, this is what this provides, this is what we're thinking, this is what. Okay, I mean, I think having that in writing would be, that would allow you to have that in front, all of us. You, us, we, um, and then to come back with additional questions, so people can really see it side by side.
Go ahead, Melanie.
I just wanna throw out these last questions, and I just wanna say them all, and then you guys can answer them as whoever knows them. It talked about using space in Jefferson as community space, if it becomes a Head Start. I'd like to know what that looks like. Then, um, where am I? I'm also curious, if it weren't for this Head Start grant that came up last winter, would we be looking at Jefferson, or would we be looking at other schools for consolidation? And with the numbers that you're saying, that were below capacity or enrollment, I think that's a conversation that might be coming up quite soon, and maybe it's time to let the other families know. So I'm interested in that, so that they don't end up like I am, up here angry. I already asked that. Just asked that. Okay, they had mentioned that we're nearing the end of the fi- and this is why I asked when it first became known to the district about this grant, because I heard it mentioned that there was like a five-year window for this grant. And now we're nearing the end of it, coming into twenty twenty, and that's why I was wondering why we sat on it for four years? And then, and then if we became, if we knew about it in December, obviously, there was consideration that went in since December into, through the summer. And, um, if Jefferson was only first thought of this summer, when you guys spoke about it at your retreat, work retreat, um, it seems like things are moving really fast. Or was Jefferson always one of the main couple of schools? Was that always one of the main, way back in December, when the district first became?
Did I, I didn't even touch it, and it went. It's kinda weird. Um, a couple of things. First of all, the five-year grant cycle is actually the East Side Grant Cycle. Is that right, Ann? All of our Head Starts? But it, it can't possibly, the, the thing about the Head Start Grant, and I went out and started reading all the statutes. Head Start Grants, they say a five-year cycle. What I understand it to be true, and there's statute, and I wrote it down, and I, I can share it with the board and anyone else that's interested, we'll put it out there. It is always renewable unless you don't comply with certain, certain things. So you can assume that the grant keeps renewing. That's the nice part about a Head Start Grant. The piece that is con- confusing about this one is that the last time we received the large grant for the East Side School, we had about a year. We had about a year at the time. We didn't have a couple of months, and that was really the surprise. And how they wrapped it into this end date to start renew it for it is, is something that no one could have anticipated, because it didn't look, or it didn't work like the last grant. It just did not. And so I don't know if it makes sense at eleven o'clock at night, if it even, if, if, if this makes sense, but it did not give us a year's of time, and that really threw us. And then the other piece was that, that not only didn't, it didn't give us a year of time, then we understood that it, the, the construction piece, we had through the start of school with the last grant too. We not only had a year, we had it, that we didn't have to have all the receipts and the bills until September, when we started school. So there, it's a very different place and space with the grant and how this one is operating versus the last. So that's, that's thrown it all. One of the things at Jefferson, it's interesting that, that you ask about, has this always been a consideration? The conversation with Jefferson, um, I remember, I don't know how many years ago, Katie, when we had, there were rumors out there about Jefferson before anyone ever even talked about Jefferson. This has been for years, and I don't know if teachers would tell you that's true or not, but I know we had, um, people come and talk to us about building a playground, because they were sure that, because the enrollment was so small, that the district was gonna, um, go there and, 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 um, um, make some changes. At that point in time, it was not ever in a conversation that any of us had had. Um, but I think what, what happened is, once we learned, we didn't learn, we got the grant until spring, summer, right in that timeframe, and we had looked at all of our enrollment data at that time, and looked at all of our schools as possibilities. And there were two spaces and two options at that point in time that we brought to the board. Um, and one of them was, where could you take, um, an entire student, um, enrollment? And, and shift it? And so consolidation, based on what we had read in the survey, made sense, because we had a vibrant repurpose potential for it versus, um, actually shuttering a school. And that, that was very important. We also looked at the, the location of the two schools. If you consolidated them, are they close enough together that, that it would still be considered similar in neighborhood? And that's the piece, I know that Week We Act came up earlier. There's really nothing close to Week We Act that you could consolidate with, there's not. So that was part of the thinking. But then the other part for Keller was saying, is this a space and place that we could put the whole school in? And the whole Head Start piece, and the answer is yes. Um, there would be some considerable change in terms of what that school would look like. But more, more our conversation was looking at trying to locate something centrally. But both are still possibilities. Um, this one made more sense because of the ability to capture some savings, to be able to reinvest in children, and to co-locate programming and support for children. Um, and you wouldn't get that same, and, and to address the upward of thousand empty seats that we're looking at. But we'll put that all together.
So what, you had mentioned the community spaces that would be available at Jefferson? What are those, if it was in this?
One of the things that we've been putting in, in our school facilities as we have opportunity is to create a space and place for community to be part of. And we know the parent education piece is so important with Head Start, and it's a, it's a part of that. So to have a, a community space for parents, but also anybody else who wants to come in and support the schools. Right now, Fort Howard has, has, um, oral health partners come in, that's a community space. We're just trying to create those, in any, any opportunity where we have resource to be, um, in construction. So through the referendum, we have a number of community spaces put in as well.
I just cut you off, sorry. Um, I was just curious, I've heard that there's a whole wing at Fort Howard that is empty. How many classrooms are there?
You know, Melody, if, if we could, we have, I, I'm wondering, um, if we could provide that to you. Um, I know Andrea Landwerth has all of that information, and she and Deanne Lehman have looked at it all. And, and with Kate as well, I believe, I don't, I don't know if the three of you have looked, Kate's nodding good, and I didn't make it up. Um, to really to see the number of classrooms, and if the capacity is there. And they walked the building and looked at what other additional, you know, how that could work, and how it could fit, so.
Did you get your question answered? The one you just asked? Right.
How many empty classrooms are there at Fort Howard? You mentioned that everybody that is at Jefferson employed right now would be able to shift over all the staff. And then we heard from the gym teacher at Jefferson that she said, except for her, there's not a place for her.
Art music or FIAID, I would assume they have their own. That would, that would not make sense.
Well, they, sorry, they would have, they, they don't have a full-time, they, they, they have a full-time FIAID, if, if they have a full-time FIAID teacher, they would still need more than one FIAID teacher in a combined school, because they're not, their full-time FIAID teacher wouldn't be, you can't add seven sections.
Full-time for us is twenty-two sections, and he currently has ten classes that they have. So adding eight would put him at eighteen.
Uh, Fort Howard has a one-point-five, uh, FTE, actually. They, they added, part of their extra resource was to add extra FIAID time. So they have a full-time person plus a part-time person, so I, I don't know how that would change, but. Oh, sorry.
Well, there are eight classrooms at Fort Worth, yeah, he gets, they get specially designed.
Yes, you have an additional section. Yes, so, so you are actively a full-time FIAID teacher on staff. But he is, he only is funded through the general funds, um, for the number of sections that he has. And then Jan and her team use the little pistol for social emotional level. If there are nine classrooms, why can't you take the Keller kids over for Fort Worth?
Is someone gonna answer that?
I, I would suppose that would be, we, we could direct, that could be an option that we would, I mean, I don't, we could direct the administration to pursue that option. I'm not saying I support that, or I don't support that, but I think it's a legitimate. Right, we're talking about, if we're voting next week, uh, on something this big, I think we need to be knowing what we're voting on. And as others have said, you know, needing to know that it's truly the best, you know, the best option. Maybe there's some, something that would make that not work that I don't know, but I think it's a valid question I've answered before we vote.
But we won't, we can't get a final answer.
We can't get a, we won't have a definitive answer on why or why not, that would be not tonight, but it's a valid point. Wouldn't, if you took the Head Start kids from Keller and moved them to Fort Howard, now you have two schools with a hundred or so kids. Right, I mean, that, that doesn't solve your problem, it actually just creates two really small schools.
If you move the kids out of Keller, the, the Head Start, they, they're gonna be moving anyways. Right?
No, she's talking about moving the not Head Start kids out of Keller and putting them in Fort Howard. If I asked, read your question right.
I don't know, I'm confused.
She's thinking there's enough room for all of the Keller K-five students in Fort Howard, so why?
I just wanna say too, that, you know, I've heard from a lot of Head Start people who want a Head Start building. Like, let that, that, that's a legitimate piece, and I think we have to validate that too, right? This is why this, this conversation is incredibly difficult. I had a number of Head Start people call me and say, I don't wanna say this in public, but I do want a Head Start building on the West Side. And they talked about the growth that Head Start could bring, right? Having a building on the West Side. So, you know, it, it, I just wanted to mention that, because, um, it, it just adds another layer into the complexities that we face, um, as a district.
Um, I just wanna finish up, because I really need to go home and go to bed. So I just wanna make sure that you heard her, she just wanted to know why they couldn't go to Fort Howard, which has nine classrooms, right? And so the Head Start needed approximately that amount of space, which would have them all at one facility as well. The second thing was, we were initially told this would be a West Side Head Start. And then when I re-looked at the district website, it said that it would also accommodate children from the East Side as well. So would all Head Starts be moving? Or is it just the West Side and some from the downtown East Side area? And my third thing, cause I And my third thing, because I just really want to get out of here, is will the principal also be able to move to Fort Howard if that happens? Ms. Dolan, would she be moving as well?
A couple of, a couple of things, first of all, it's my understanding that the Head Start consolidated schools would be, there's currently one at the Hall Resource Center, there's one at Southwest High School, and then there's also being serviced at Keller, so three different locations. So that's where they would all be coming from. I don't know how many kids are being transported from a different part of the city. I don't know that for sure, I don't want to misspeak. But I know that there are children that I've been, it's been shared that they live in this downtown area as well, so, that would be attending. So that's one piece. As far as the principal coming over, at least for a transition period, it has been, it's come up as something the board might wish to consider for a transition. The piece around that is, you know, there's opportunity there perhaps for the principal to choose something else too. But again, I think that remains to be seen. I talked to Kate about it actually last Friday and let her know that there were people interested in talking and have talked to me about that perhaps would be a consideration. I would put that out for the transition team to come back and say to the board and to administration, these are things we think we need as we move forward to make sure that our children feel supported and our staff. And we'd like Kate to be part of that. You know, that would not, not be out of consideration. These are things though, that moving forward, we're going to have to make those considerations. And that is one that's been brought up.
Thank you.
But, but it's safe to say, we can't make someone choose where they're going to work. We can't do that. Just wanted to make sure of that.
I hope, I hope something we take away from this is that, as disruptive as a conversation about school consolidation is, I hope that the message is heard loud and clear about, you know, when we hear some of these comments like, you know, you did a, yes, you did a survey to the west side, but you, or a survey about west side consolidation. But we don't know if that would have looked the same if it was talking about, right, when you use vague terms, it's pretty easy to get results. I'm not, I'm not saying people did it on purpose, but I am saying that a survey, survey questions generated incomplete information with all the questions pretty much getting a yes because they seemed pretty safe. What would have happened if we put a survey that said, the west side has a thousand empty seats. Here are some, here are some possibilities being considered and we named them? Where would that have shaken out? I don't know, and it's too late now to do it comprehensively before this decision. You know, parent meetings, you know, that, that letter could have said a lot more clearly what was being talked about and there wouldn't have been a surprise. I mean, even the, it was known by the time that letter went out. You know, why not come right out and say it? And we didn't. We said, as some of the proposed consolidations such as school consolidation and repurposing of existing schools could still have an impact this school year. That was not as clear as it could have been, and by the time this came out, we knew what it was. And this letter should have been clearer. And would we have heard from more people if they knew what the stakes were? I don't know, but that was disappointing. And I think if we, I think we would be in a better place now if we had been more forthcoming about it, even though people would have been upset longer because it would have started sooner. But maybe we would be in a better place now. And I hope this is the last time I see like these vague things. I mean, sometimes it's vague because we truly don't know, but by the time this letter came out, we knew. We knew what we were talking about and it, yeah.
So based on some conversation that has been floated around, some of the commentary tonight, it is somewhat inevitable that Keller will also be going through this, is that true? Right?
Yes.
Right, okay, so we're saying that right now. But we're not sure why it would be happening, right? Or do we know? Because there are families there, right?
In July, when we had the conversation with the board, we talked about the possibility of moving John Dewey Academy and the N E W school at the end of their contract as a place and space for that space. So again, the conversations, and that was at the end of twenty twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. So those conversations would begin, the principal is aware, we've had the conversations with the principal as a possibility as well.
If I remember that conversation correctly, I remember thinking about what that, what that was even, if that was even a good idea in the first place. I remember that was the flavor of that conversation because of the location of it where it is now, all the work that was done to the building now, because I think that's important. So I'm, because it just sounds like there are things decided and it's, but we didn't decide. We didn't take votes on that day, we didn't do any of that. But at this point, when we're talking about, because it's, you know, a third of the school year in, and you would be doing this, I would imagine, we still consider at this table as if Keller would be a possibility in this equation. But it's really not, so I think we need to just say it's not. Wouldn't it be nice? But, but I think that, okay, and I hear you, and, but I think there are things, there's, it's like a shell game, right? And it's moving, and there are things out there that are, so that we don't end up where we are right now, again, in this cluster, that families have what they deserve. As a board member, I'd love to know what's really on the table for these spaces because there must be something.
Well, we would have, we, I think, I think the intention this summer, when we had the redesign twenty twenty that talked about possibilities, including Jefferson, including Keller, the idea was a big community conversation, taking all the things into account at once. We were misled by, about timelines by someone from the federal side, is my understanding, and suddenly realized we might be, it might be now or never. And I think it would be irresponsible to just automatically say, okay, never, and not even look at the option to get 1.9 million dollars of federal construction money. That in itself is not enough of a reason, but it's enough of a reason to look sooner, I think. And we would have talked, you know, that's, and that's why I remember at that retreat saying, I, you know, I think I'm okay with looking further into all of these. It's unfortunate that one got rushed, and it's really unfortunate that one got rushed and we, and vague terms were used to communicate about it, and that's, and that's not okay. I'm not going to stand for that happening again, and I'm a little embarrassed.
All right, so going back to your first statement, do you want to recommend a motion for next week? Or at some point, we have to have something on the, on the, the motion for next week? Do you have something in mind?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if it's as simple as, I move to consolidate Jefferson Elementary with Fort Howard Elementary at the beginning of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
I mean, we can put.
Twenty, 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 twenty-one school year.
Twenty, twenty, yeah.
Are you making a motion or are you proposing that for next week?
For next week, yeah. We'll just put it on the, the.
I just have to say, just have to say this, but we're doing this without knowing, was just stated, that we don't know what else is possible.
Well, this is, we can change the motion, it's just, we want to put something on the, on the agenda. And any motion can be changed. It just gives us a starting point. So if, I mean, we still have discussion and still have questions out there that will be answered for next week.
Right, but I'm not ready to agree to a motion unless I have answers.
It's just a placeholder.
Then why do we have to do it?
Because we're, we're wanting to have a special board meeting next Monday to make a decision about this consolidation. And the motion is a placeholder. And as always, boards can table it, vote it down, or vote it up. So we.
We want, we want people to, I mean, I think, you know, a problem that I, a reason I would not, and I would have automatically voted no if we voted on consolidation tonight, is all we have on here is redesign twenty twenty.
Right.
And I think it's important that redesign twenty twenty was on there so we could talk about other things that are part of redesign twenty twenty. That's important. To me, it would be legal, it would be legal to vote, because we're posted for redesign twenty twenty and Jefferson consolidation is part of it, it would be legal to make a motion tonight and vote for it. But I don't think that would be okay. I think we need to get the notice to the public. And my mind is not made up which way I'm going to vote on, on a motion about it. Unless there would be construction during the year, in which case my mind is made up as a no. If I can't be guaranteed no construction during the year that moves kids around. But I think it's better to, I certainly wouldn't want to just throw redesign twenty twenty on the agenda again next week. I want it to be crystal clear what, what might, I want the motion to be clear what, that someone's planning to make that motion next week, rather than it being vague about what motions people might, might make.
And to that, based on the last agenda preparation, it was extremely vague, I reached out to you on Saturday and said, why isn't there anything posted when you go to redesign on the agenda? There's nothing, literally nothing. There's no link, there's nothing, there wasn't even, and I did, I went through, I talked to both of you. I asked about why we're not being more transparent about this on the agenda, right? And why this didn't state that we could potentially take a vote, which is why I put a Facebook post out because I think it's important that people understand. There's so many stories happening with this and there's not a lot of consistency. There's, it's, we should be overdoing all of the communication to the point where we're, we're told we're communicating too much. So when you, whatever goes forward to the next meeting in the agenda, because I had, I had people from the media asking me what it was, I had, what is it, what's happening? There's nothing for anybody to actually go to and see what's going to happen. So that has to continue in the way that people know we might take a vote. I don't know what that looks like, I don't know what that sounds like, but we have to do that. They can't go to something and it's blank.
But it isn't anymore.
Well, yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, but that's the thing.
I knew it too, so I mean, I, I mean.
Right, but I'm just saying, it's, we can't move forward like this. Because if we're even thinking about carrying on and continuing this process for other schools, it's just, it's just so sloppy. And honestly, it's, it's very backdoor.
That's why we put the motion on for next week, so that's clear.
But will that actually be in the agenda, because it wasn't this last time?
Yeah, there was no motion today because we had no idea what the board was going to want to do. We had no idea what vote, I, I didn't know where the board stood.
We were going to take a vote, and we didn't.
I would have, I would have said no, I was, I was committed to not taking a vote on Jefferson consolidation tonight.
But we're, we're putting a motion together, right? We're crafting something that they would have liked to have had a say in, that's the point. We could have done it though, if we wanted to, we could have, you just said that.
Well, we talked last time at our meeting, the reason it got put on as a potential action item was that we talked about giving ourselves, because we talked about whether we wanted to continue exploring consolidation. And, and I put it on action so that we would have an opportunity to take a vote. Because so often, we're not, we don't do consensus votes, so in order for us to even.
The average public, person in the public doesn't know that, right? We have to, we have to make this as clear as possible every time there's a potential, whatever. To me, if there's, if the conversation is out there, you know, we're calling it redesign, that's not how a lot of people are taking this. We need it as clear as possible. So it needs to be every time, without having to, for me, it'll be on a Saturday to be like, oh my God, there's nothing on there. I had to take time to go in, I don't set the agendas. That's what you do, that's what Andrew does.
We could have, I think there's certain types of things that we could have done that there isn't majority support for either. I think if a majority wanted to kill, kill further exploration of consolidation, I think that would probably have been okay to do tonight, but there isn't a majority for that. I think the bigger step of actually consolidating does require additional time. And so I think this is the, I think this is the right way to do it, and I'm, I don't know which way I'm going to vote. It depends on, largely on things I, on answers to some of these questions.
So I'd like to make a motion. I move to consolidate Jefferson Elementary School with Fort Howard Elementary School for the beginning of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year.
For next.
For next week.
So, okay, so you're not making a motion for us to vote on tonight? So. That's what, yeah, that'll be put on the agenda.
Does it need to have a second tonight or next week?
We'll put it on the agenda. All right. So we will continue on in our, in the rest of our agenda. Next is InterCity Student Council Report, and Noah, I assume you're giving that tonight?
I have permission from Luke, he said.
Okay, yes.
Okay. Just a couple of things that were brought up at the last ICSC meeting. So Stock the Box was already mentioned, that was successful. Preville and Southwest, looks like they'll go to the playoffs for football, so that's good. The marching band expedition, I don't know if that got mentioned, that was, that was an important event and that was popular.
And held indoors because of the rain?
Yes, it was loud, it was pretty interesting, it was, it was awesome though, it was really cool. All school, I, almost all schools except West, I think, had blood drives that were successful. And we're meeting with you on Thursday with more agenda topics that I think some, they exist somewhere, I haven't memorized them, but I know what they are in theory. And, yeah, that's, that's what I got. Yeah, that's, that's what I got, we're, we're meeting with you on Thursday and there'll be more discussion on grades and dress code and such forth at that meeting.
Okay. Yep. Thank you, Noah. Next is Legislative Liaison Report, I'll turn that over to Laura.
The only thing I'm going to report on is the, um, the, um, Policy and Resolution Committee meeting that I attended. On September twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, we started Friday night talking about all the different resolutions. Um, just basically reviewing them and making sure everyone understood them. The next day, we broke out into smaller groups, um, where we all, went through them all again. And, um, and kinda took a tally of which ones we thought kinda met the, the criteria. Um, to go to the next step. All three of Green Bay's resolutions, proposed resolutions, made it through to the next round, which will be in, uh, early November. Um, the one that we, I think a lot of people were interested in was the, um. The one pertaining to, uh, Native American mascots. That, uh, was interesting, frankly, the discussion was, uh, lengthy. And, um, there were multiple attempts to soften the language on that. And, um, various ways, there's various ways to do that. Um, but in the end, I think, uh, the, the most, uh, the most powerful, uh, input was from the representative from Wausau. Who, um, basically said flat out that the, this was about racism. And that kind of set everyone back a bit. Um, and I was, um, I, I spoke and said that, um, Green Bay was supporting the resolution. And, um, that our board had had, um, and heard some very powerful testimony from, um, tribal leaders. And they, I think people were interested in hearing about that. Um, that resolution also made it through to the next round without the language being softened, but that doesn't mean it can't still happen. Um, we're gonna have another look at all of this in early November. And, um, and then whatever makes it through that will go on to, um, to January. To the, um, convention. And that's it.
All right, thanks Laura.
Can we just move on to work session reports?
Yeah, unless anybody has any district events or school visits they're dying to share? Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Katie.
I move that the English Learner Wisconsin History Course Essential Documents as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
McCoy?
Aye.
Vannen-Hubel?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the West High School International Baccalaureate Middle Years Program Mathematics Four and Five Course Essential Documents. And Resources as presented be approved.
Second.
Andrew?
I move to amend the motion by adding that West High School would continue to run. The traditional math pathway as well as the IB middle years program pathway.
Second. Forever?
Uh, indefinitely. Not tran- not transitionally, oh, I mean, I'll speak to it. Yeah, wait a second, I'll speak to it now, so, yeah. There is, there is no emergency reason to go to all integrated math. At West. Um, West is, is not so tiny that you would suddenly have eight or ten kids taking. Traditional algebra or geometry or Algebra II. I am not, and I, I, I am not anti IB. And in fact, I, with, with this amendment, I will happily vote yes on West bringing in the integrated math. I think it's worth another shot to have two math options for kids. But I'm not signing on to something where Green Bay, which has in every imaginable way. And I'm glad we have been, more options, more choices. Uh, except now, not math at just, just West. It doesn't make sense to me, there aren't other school districts doing this large, there aren't many school districts doing this large scale. Um, I did my homework, I looked at IB schools. Um, even large, well-known IB schools like Shaker Heights. They have regular algebra and geometry pathway and you don't even make a decision about IB until later as far as math. Of, of all the things that you could decide to go all in on IB. Math is the one where the method of instruction fundamentally changes. If you did this with Language Arts, if you did this with History, Social Studies, it's not nearly as big of a switch. So we're doing this all in in math and it's not right for West. It's not fair to West to have it be one size fits all. And if a student or family wants to do algebra and geometry. There is no compelling reason to tell them that they can't have that. I am prepared to vote for something, if this amendment passes, that would give West a large opportunity. To have most of its students taking an integrated math pathway. And seeing how that, and honoring them wanting to try something new at their school. And it's not, it's, it's not only about X number of kids didn't have integrated math where they're coming from. Because they're new to West and that accommodation alone is not enough for me to support this. Um, but the, the burden of proof to say that we're going to change. Fundamentally change the way we do all math instruction at one school. It's not convincing me that it's not bad. You have to prove that it's necessary to ma- if you're gonna make everyone do it, you have to prove that it's necessary. And they've certainly proven that it's worth a try and they've certainly not proven it's necessary for everyone to do this. Because, because you can't, and I think I gave it a fair look and this should not be one size fits all.
Noah?
I wish I had something a little bit more definite from the students, so I, I was going to go to the student council with this and I didn't, so. Sorry about that, but informally, and that's, that's what I can give you, and so, take that or leave it. But I did ask people about this, I asked people who are, I would say are more knowledgeable than I am about how math curriculum works for high schools. And who had done their own research and they all seemed to say, they, some of them said they didn't want it at all, but a lot said, you know what? If there are both options offered, I think that'd be okay for West students. I, I don't, I would pretty much echo the same thing, I don't understand why. Why, why are we more, more college credit opportunities, more different ways to earn that? More, like, more pathways except for one area, doesn't really add up to me. And I, if both ran, I, and I, and NYPD is, you know what I mean, it's something to look at. But I think that replacing it leaves, there's, there's no way to. Uh, you're trapped in that for a year and now it's integrated too, so you have to continue that. So you end up in kind of a strange situation if this ends up not working very well of having to continue with an integrated system. So I think that, yeah, if this amendment passes, I can say, you know, this is, next year should be pretty good for West math. But the original, completely eliminating all traditional options doesn't, doesn't appear to make much sense to me.
Sorry, Katie.
Brendan, till I've got my hand up. John, do we have the capacity to staff both, both trends?
Sure, I mean, we can do, I mean, I, I, I think that we, I was not prepared for, for this, uh, element of, of proposal. I think that, that, uh. I mean, I think that, that the, you want me to come up?
If you could come up and if you're not prepared to, I would almost table this until we meet on the twenty-eighth. Because this is, it's late, it's.
Amendment is to require the second pathway, to ru- to run both pathways.
So it's my understanding that we were looking, that we're running a, an algebra course as a transitional course. And so that's what I proposed with West High School, because it was my understanding that that's what we're looking at. Uh, but this is a new development, I would be glad to explore it further between now and then, uh, to also give recommendations. It's, it's difficult for me to, um. I, 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 I guess it's better for us to wait, but it, it's difficult for me to understand how an entire department that is looking at, at this moving forward. And the principal who wants this to move forward. And it's been recommended for best practices that, that we're not giving full consideration to it. But I, I do understand that there are, uh, individual thoughts and interests and I wanna make sure that those are fully addressed. So I think we can come back on Monday with more information. Thank you.
So I moved to table. Second.
Okay, so I guess, will that be posted for public comment? Well, I, will I be, what time is that meeting on Monday? I think it's pretty.
Six o'clock, and then we have the budget. Now we have, uh, consolidation, we would have math.
Okay, so it's gonna be another five hour long meeting, I just think it's kinda, I, I get, I understand what people are saying. But I think it, I think it's kinda interesting that you're gonna postpone it to a meeting where there's no student here. I mean, and it's gonna be at ten thirty at night.
Well, the, I don't know, I don't know, there'll be, I mean, the budget, the budget is likely to, historically, the budget, because it's. The final amount is dictated to us by the state, uh, generally is this, I thi- I don't think it's turning a three hour meeting into six. I think adding consolidation in West math is turning a thirty minute meeting into a.
Two or three.
Two or three hour meeting, yes. I think we should, I, I, I think because, there is something interesting here though. I, I, I do think ICSC should be invited to have representatives at the meeting. Because two things that substantially impact students have been added to something that ordinarily would've just been a budget meeting. So I think that should be extended to them. But at the, officially, I mean, I don't know that that's, unless we're, we have that, yeah, at the table, okay. So long as that's clear then.
There's just no way we can vote on something that was sprung.
Well, there should, it, it, no, it wasn't sprung, because I made it clear since they tried to do this last year. That there is no way that I am ever going to be okay with an IB only, integrated only math curriculum at, at one school. There is no surprise here. None. But I guess then there really won't be next week.
All right, we've got a motion.
I'll move, yeah.
We've already moved to table. Yeah, she seconded, so Sandy, go ahead.
Sitnikow?
She's not here.
Oh, I didn't see her walk away. Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Vannen-Hubel?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Becker?
No.
Carried five one.
I move that the Career and Technical Education Course Essential Documents and Resources as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Vannen-Hubel?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that Bridges Construction and Renovation Program Course Essential Documents and Professional Development as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
McCoy?
Aye.
Vannen-Hubel?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
That concludes our work session.
All right, thanks, next organizational support, um, facilitated by Andrew Becker.
I move that the table of organization be modified to change Associate Director ESSA to Director ESSA as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Vannen-Hubel?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
No.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Carried six one.
Move that the transfer of Lisa Bynum, Associate Director ESSA, twelve months, uh, to Director of ESSA, twelve months. As presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Shelton?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Vannen-Hubel?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the transfer of Lisa Lipp, Administrative Intern at East High School. Uh, to High School Associate Principal and a salary prorated as presented effective October, uh, twenty-second, twenty nineteen. As presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Vannen-Hubel?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the transfer of Stephen Shane, Special Education Lead Teacher at Edison. Uh, to Supervisor of Special Education, twelve months, effective October twenty-second, twenty nineteen, as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Vannen-Hubel?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section one eighteen point oh seven four CP. The written drill evaluations meant by the principals from all district schools as reviewed be accepted.
Second.
Sandy?
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Aye. What? Aye. Carried seven zero.
Oops, Vannen-Hubel.
Oh, sorry, didn't get to seven yet.
Move that the consent items as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Vannen-Hubel?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Carried seven zero. Um, oh, keep going, Andrew.
Well, setting future agendas, oh, okay. I know it's getting late, does, does anybody have any agenda items they wanna propose? This will come up again in two weeks, so, um. Okay.
I'd mentioned it last time about looking into discussing with possible action, this cell phone usage policy. I'd mentioned it last time about looking into discussing with possible action, the cellphone usage policy in, for students in the district.
What in particular are you, when, when did we last change that, Melissa?
A year ago.
A year ago? So it's been recently updated, so what particular are you looking to, to change?
Well, I'm not entirely saying I want to change, I, they want us to have a discussion, teachers have been talking about this, that they're having issues with students and cellphones in class. And some teachers allow it in class, some don't. Okay, so, um, I don't even remember what our current policy is. Well, and then, and it's not.
I think share the policy.
Well, we have it on our, we can just look it up.
But I mean, I guess, bottom line, they're feeling that they're creating a problem in the classroom.
And so the teachers want us to ban cellphones from the school?
They want us to have a conversation about what's going on, because I believe it's not consistent from building to building.
But that's not. Because of, the inconsistency is not a problem with the policy, inconsistency is, is inconsistency.
I just said I would bring it up.
Yeah, but I'm just trying to figure out what makes sense to, to, to do.
The policy is essentially off during instructional time, except, except if the teacher says it's okay. So there is, the policy is no unless otherwise specified, and the principal can specify, or the teacher can specify.
And they're allowed to have it outside of class in the halls and.
And outside instructional time, yes, and so that's, that's what it is. Do we have the, are we doing the, are we doing the recess policy next month, I just don't want to overload next month.
School start times are on.
Okay.
I guess I'd like to, I mean, if there's, you know, this is the second time around, is I'd like to see it no, no later than December be some kind of agenda item, is that reasonable? Cellphone policy?
In December?
Yeah, no later than, I mean, so, somewhere in there.
It, it really depends on what we're talking about, so. Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, and do we do surveys, do we do, it's, it sounds like the consistency of the implementation of the current policy, correct?
So we need to find out what teachers are hoping will be in the policy to make their lives easier. I guess that's the question.
Proposing a policy change yet either.
I am just saying that I've been asked to bring forward a conversation about what can be done for cellphone distraction in the classroom.
What if, what if we just had a conversation as a board on the topic of cellphones? Look at the current policy, talk about what we've been hearing, I mean, we don't necessarily need a presentation from staff.
No, I mean, it's pretty lacking, it's, there's a policy, there's some issues. I think we should be looking for, if we're gonna look for hat feedback, we should look for cellphone feedback. Because if we don't.
Right.
Then we'll end up.
What have we learned?
Right, that's why I'm saying that.
So then are you suggesting that they seek cellphone feedback?
They seemed very motivated to do, to, for, to have us have a discussion of some kind where we could, I don't, I don't really know exactly. They just, this is a distraction, distraction, you have to do something about cellphones in the classroom, that's just what, I keep hearing that over and over.
But is the, they want us to post on an agenda that we're gonna be discussing it so that they can come and.
Well.
Are we just going with the random calls that we've had from people?
I would think that would never be a good idea, to go with random calls. I would say, there's a discussion at the board table, all are welcome, teachers included, we're looking for feedback. Are you happy, are you not, what do you think could be improved? Do you think the current policy is being followed, do you think it's not, why, those conversations.
So then that may lead to the board pursuing policy change, it may not lead to the board.
It might lead to awareness that there's not consistency with cellphone in the classroom, right.
Is that a separate board meeting, or is that, actually, we want to honor the time for the rest of your board agenda, and not have people at a long meeting, so do you want a retreat on that, or do you want?
Can, can I make a suggestion? Can, can, we're starting our, like, work groups, can the Culture Climate Work Group talk about this next week on Monday? Can that just happen? And then we can talk, see, Vicki, you said do the work in the work groups, that's what I'm trying to do. So we'll talk about it on Monday in the work group, and then we can let the board, we can come back with a recommendation about what we want to do, done.
Sounds good.
I appreciate that, because I'm, you know, I keep hearing it, and they keep asking me if I've said something.
All right, um, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Yeah, we did.
Brenda made the motion, we all said something. You said aye.
It was seven oh.
Brenda, just as soon as I said aye.
Well, no, that was the one before that. So is there a second on the gen, adjournment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www dot G B A P S dot org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero four four eight two zero two five, or by email at communications at G B A P S dot org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format, and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.